Okay, welcome. Why don't we get started? I'm going to call a meeting to order. This is the regular, this is the annual organizational and regular meeting of the Board of Trustees for December 8th. Let's start with the pledge, please. I pledge allegiance to the flag, the United States of America, to the republic for which it stands, one nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Okay. I hope you enjoyed, those of you who are here, I hope you enjoyed the holiday reception. Glad to have this opportunity each year and see all of you people in the beginning of the season. We did not take any action in closed session that requires reporting out, so we're past that item and that will take us right to hearings on items not on the agenda. This one's late, I think. Let's start with Andy Poncet Leon and Joe Agostino about some news about Deans College Sports.
How many minutes are we going to put on the clock?
They can have five. Joe, welcome.
Contesting now, there we go. Good evening, President Torres, trustees and board. My name is Andy Poncet De Leon and I'm the head coach for cross-country track and field at Deans College and I just wanted to say thank you all for tonight. And just giving us a few minutes to recognize this exceptional group of young women that's right behind me. And for your continued support as well for our program. When I arrived to LSU, I'm from LSU this summer, these women right behind me were stepping into a season of change and new expectations and standards that were being put in place and those first few weeks were pretty rough as we transitioned through all that change, but by mid-season, these ladies were really coming along pretty well and and ultimately showed up when it matters most. I just wanted to share with you some of the highlights of our postseason. When they kicked it off into championship season at the conference meet, it was a thrilling one-point victory over Hartnell on their home course as they came from behind and just beat them by one point. So that was a nice kickoff to the postseason with that conference win. But right after that win, even after that victory, they weren't included in any state rankings or honorable mentions by the committees across the state. So two weeks later, they decided to step it up again and they shocked the region by winning the NorCal title, which was pretty exciting again. And after that meet, I told them, I was like, ladies, you really remind me of the Bad News Bears. And a lot of them had this confused look on their faces. And then that's when I just remembered, oh, I do have gray hair and you know, that's just another, that's just another time, right? But I think what if I mentioned, who's that coach? You know, are we running against them later? I was like, don't worry about it. Don't worry about it. Just be you, continue to do what you do because being you is good enough. Just be you, you know, and they continued to do that. So despite the conference and the regional titles, the pre-state rankings came out and it still left them off the top 10. But that didn't shake their focus. Instead of letting that frustrate them, they just continued working and believing in their growth and what they did. And finally, when the state championships came around, they rose yet again. And they got fourth in California, which tied the highest finish in program history from Deans and just capping off an incredible postseason run, just exceeding expectations. And I think we talked about all those accolades, but what really stands out was just their growth and culture overall. It just supporting each other. That's not to say that there weren't tears along with many laughs as well, but just the overall growth of what happens within athletics. And the reason why I do what we get to do is just to be able to coach up some untapped potential and everything that we get to do. So, so thanks again for all the support. Thank you, President Torres, Athletic Director Ron Han and Dr. Mendoza for choosing me to lead this program full-time because it is incredibly difficult to lead four sports, cross-country, track and field, men and women, all season long. So thank you for that. And this team right here just proved that, you know, student athletes can flourish. We don't just participate here, we can compete with the best programs of the state. So that's pretty exciting to see. So thank you for believing in our students behind me and supporting the programs that help them grow not as athletes, but as confident young women. And that just spills into everything else they do in life. So really, thank you all.
Andy, you want to introduce your team members?
Yes, absolutely. We have Sienna. Erica. Corinne. And Natalie right here. So we had four of the six, the other two, we got some big majors, all of them biology majors and of course finals time. So a couple of them could make it tonight, but here are four of the six, a small group, but very mighty.
Good job, ladies. Good job. And Joe, you're next. Joe here, there he is.
I think it'd be harder for my group to fit in this aisle. Oh, my clock's going, I better go. All right. I'm Joe Di Augustino, I'm the head football coach at Deans. Good evening. I want to express some sincere gratitude for the support of our football program from the entire district, including Chancellor Lambert. But I'd be remiss to not specifically mention our Deans administration. So I want to say thank you to President Torres, Dean Mendoza and Ron Han and our Athletic Director for their consistent leadership and trust and belief, all right, in our football program because two years ago, nobody believed in us. But their steadfast commitment has shown you know, both on-field success as well as the off-the-field stuff that we're doing with the football academic support team, which is our FAST program, through their ability to always find solutions to the challenges that we faced. Over the last four years, our team has grown stronger in the weight room, but more structured and also more effective off the field, which I take a lot of pride in. Tonight, you know, we're celebrating the results of the collective four-year vision. For those that don't know, over the last two seasons, we've gone back-to-back 10-0 undefeated and won consecutive league titles in two separate leagues. Unfortunately, we've lost the two games at the end of the year, but those are milestones that haven't been reached at Deans since the 70s. And so these accomplishments are a product of the dedication of the student athletes like these behind me and the dedication of President Torres, Chancellor Lambert, the board, everybody that's invested in our players. It's not just coaches and players, but it's a collective body to raise the group. And these sophomores that are leaving tonight, after they're done here at Deans are leaving with a record of 20-2, which is pretty amazing. I don't care where you play, that's pretty good. And I think that as a head coach, I'm incredibly proud of our staff, the support staff, our academic counselors, our trainers, our administration, all these different people that invested energy and effort into our program. And I think that we're in a good place and we're headed to more success hopefully in the future. And we would thank you for your time. I'm going to introduce who's here. So this is sophomore Demetrius Espino, Chase DeSantis, Dominic Mercado, you can raise your hand so they know who I'm talking about. Lamar Heath, you gotta get out of the way of them. There you go. Chris Butler, who led the state of California in kickoff returns. Yeah, he had three straight games with kickoff returns for touchdowns, which was pretty amazing. And then Alex Jacoby in the back who transitioned from quarterback to an all-league safety. So thank you again for fostering the success of not only football, but all of Deans athletic programs. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, guys. Thank you for both teams coming out tonight. We've got another champion in the room tonight. Always will be for us at any rate. One of our local members of the assembly, Patrick Arons. Did you see the video of the Legislative Committee in New Jersey providing the new US Senator from New Jersey with three minutes and then cutting him off at the end of three minutes?
Yeah, how much time do I have? You just used like 10 seconds of my time. As usual, Trustee Landsberger, taking my spotlight. It is good, so good to see. I feel very much at home here. As many of you know, I served for about six years, I want to say, on this. As many of you know, I served for about six years, I want to say, on this board when I was in my young twenties. And just a tremendous opportunity of a lifetime. I miss all of you and I'm so appreciative of the amazing work that I've been hearing about in Sacramento, about the work that you are doing, that is breaking barriers that no one else is doing statewide. Your efforts to secure reliable and fast transportation, to embarking on supporting our housing efforts for students, faculty and staff. It's been amazing to talk to you, talk to you about you, to all of my colleagues in Sacramento as we begin to see more ways in which we can support you all at a local level. And I'm looking forward to introducing more pieces of legislation. In January, the first bill I had would expand the college promise program to part-time students. And so we are, we are working diligently to expand several of those, but mainly just wanted to come by and say hello, how I appreciate each and every one of you. It's so good to see so many familiar faces and just really appreciate the advocacy that Foothill Deans is doing and that both our amazing college presidents and Chancellor Lambert have been a constant call in my office, asking me, what am I doing for Foothill Deans? And so I appreciate the advocacy that you are giving to this and with the, you know, just the focus on governmental advocacy and making sure that our taxpayer dollars are being spent back here in the district, supporting our students. And appreciate the work that Ellen Kame is doing on your team as well to help represent you and working with our legislative offices. And belated congratulations to Trustee Govada. I know that Sunnyvale is in good hands with your advocacy and I wanted to, because I'm in the legislature now. I wanted, you know, being the board president is not as easy as I thought it would be. And it's a lot of wrangling, it's a lot of extra meetings and calls that many of you all don't know about. It's a lot of really thinking how to resolve as many issues as possible and convene as many stakeholders as possible to try and get to solutions. And so I wanted to present this to Chancellor, to President Landsberger for all of your tremendous leadership to the district and thank you for your service as board.
Time's up.
Thank you, Peter. I want to present this to you.
Thank you, Patrick.
There's somebody with camera.
Why don't you come back here?
We're just going to look at you adoringly.
All right. Awesome. Thanks, everyone. I'll give this back to you. Thanks, everyone. I miss you all.
Okay, so next on our agenda, I can vacate this office. First, let me remind everybody how the nomination process works. Under Robert Rules of Order, unlike motions, a nomination does not require a second, but the nominee does need to accept the nomination. So what I'm going to do now is open nominations, see for president, see if there's, there will be at least one, I'm sure. There better be at least one. And there could be others, in which case we'll determine how we proceed to a vote. But the first person to get the affirmative vote of three of the elected trustees will become our president for the next year. After the presidency is filled for the coming year, we'll move to the vice presidency in a similar fashion. So at this point, I would like to open the floor for nominations for board president for the remainder of this year and most of the calendar year 27. And I have a nomination.
You and I have, of course, served as president and vice president at various times together. And so I am pleased to nominate and see if Trustee Casas would like to be president in the upcoming time.
So we have a nomination to Trustee Casas. Do you accept the nomination?
Well, first of all, I want to thank your leadership, Peter Landsberger, for your work with our district. Thank you for the confidence in suggesting that I be president at this time. I cannot accept things going on. But if it's possible, I would like to nominate Terry Godfrey. Trustee Godfrey. And if that's acceptable to you.
I'll take that as a nomination. In lieu of trustee Chang's, which you did not accept, Trustee Godfrey, do you accept the nomination?
I appreciate the show of support, Trustee Casas. And I know that I'll have good tutors on the dais with me. I would be happy to take on this role if y'all vote that way.
Okay, are there any other nominations? In which case, I'm going to close the nominations and start the vote, advisory vote? Board vote?
Aye.
Aye.
That's unanimous. Trustee Godfrey, congratulations. I'm going to turn the gavel over to you right now.
Man, you can't get other person up. Okay, coming, moving.
Okay, I'm unprepared, just so you know. I'd like to follow a similar process as we nominate a potential vice president. Do we hear any nominations?
I'd like to nominate Trustee Casas for consideration.
I accept.
Any other nominations? All right, student trustees, it's your advisory vote?
Aye.
Trustees, your vote?
Aye.
Congratulations. Okay, well, that was dramatic. Thank you. Thank you for the vote of confidence. Help me through this, since it's my first time on this dais doing this job. We have plenty of things to do this evening, so let's get to the next bits, which are also part of the organizational meeting. Our, next on our agenda is designating a board member to vote in the county election. Do I need a nomination for that or there's, it's an action? And Trustee.
I have served in that role and so just to my colleagues, if any others might be interested, that is totally fine. I have enjoyed this. I am still in touch with the K-12 districts. That is what this role refers to in terms of reorganization matters. We have not had any in a while.
How much work is involved?
Not, not much, only if, only if a matter goes before the county committee. And so that is rare.
I would recommend, if you're willing, that you continue on in this role?
Very willing.
Okay. Any other suggestions or input on that? Any questions? Okay, student advisory vote?
Aye.
Board vote?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you. Next up is trustee committee appointments. We have two committees, three committees on which we serve. One of them is the Finance and Audit Committee, the other one is the Foundation Board. And then the third is a committee that reviews scholarship applications that are awarded annually. So we have three different opportunities to serve. The Finance and Audit Committee currently, I believe trustee Chang is the chair and I believe trustee Landsberger is also a member of that committee. Is that something you'd be willing to continue to do? Any other input or ideas from other trustees? Okay, hearing none other. Student advisory vote?
Aye.
Aye.
And trustee vote?
Yes.
Aye.
Okay, that one's solved. Up next is Foundation Board. We have two trustees that sit on the Foundation Board currently. It's trustee Casas and myself. I would rather not do that going forward, just in my, my change in role. Trustee Casas, is that something you'd be willing to do? Trustee Govatva, is that something you'd be willing to do? Okay, any other suggestions? Okay, let's vote on it. Student trustees?
Aye.
Trustees?
Aye.
Thank you. Okay, we're cruising later on. The last one is the Committee to Review Applications for Scholarships. Trustee Govatva and I did that last year. I would love to do that again this year. I believe trustee Casas has some, some interest in doing that.
Absolutely.
Any other interest? All right, so I would suggest myself and trustee Casas for that. Student advisory vote?
Aye.
And trustee vote?
Yes.
All right, that business is done. Thank you very much. All right, up next, we're going to talk, we're going to talk numbers. So item one on our agenda is the draft audit for the year end. The year ended June 30th, 2025, and I believe that is Vice Chancellor De La Rosa. You're on.
Trustee Godfrey, members of the board, good evening. I'd like to introduce Executive Director of Fiscal Services, Raquel Pundus-Gryffit, to introduce our auditors.
Hello, good evening. Tonight, we have the presentation of the 24-25 District and Bond Audit. They are draft and they are still draft because our friends at the federal government level had some technicalities and some delays this year. And you'll hear more about that in the presentation from our auditor. Before I bring up Jeff, I really wanted to take this opportunity to extend my sincere gratitude to all of the teams and the individuals at the campuses, both Deans, Foothill and Central Services for their time and their effort gathering all of the documentation, answering questions, meeting with the auditors. As the point of contact and the coordinator of the audit each year, I am continually impressed with the prompt responses and the collaboration that we receive each and every year. So just another big thank you to everyone who contributed. All right, so with that, I have Jeff Jensen here with us. He is the, thank you, he's the engagement partner for the district's audit and he will be walking you through some information tonight.
Great, thank you. Good evening. I have a brief slide deck to walk you through here, which will distill down the much larger audit report into some key facts and information for you and happy to answer any questions that you might have. So our job as your auditors is to form and express an opinion on the financial statements that are prepared by management. We also provide an opinion on federal and state compliance as well. This audit started quite a while ago, back in May, when we started with our planning procedures, which develops a risk assessment related to the district's audit, which then, and in turn, develops the amount of procedures we need to complete, whether it's a look at your internal controls, look at the supporting documentation in order to render an opinion on your financial statements. So like I said, the work started back in May and June. Then we were back in September and October, looking at the, the numbers of the district after the books were closed and then wrapping it up with reporting and presenting to the Audit and Finance Committee last week and here tonight, obviously, to present the, the report to the board. There were a couple of new accounting standards this year that are included in your financial statements. So the first is on GASB 101 on compensated absences. And really, this is kind of a refresh at looking at different types of leaves that exist at different governments and trying to kind of put everybody level set on the same page as to how those are accounted for in your financial statements. So while there was quite an exercise that management had to go through to evaluate what the balance should be, there wasn't actually a significant change to your ending liability at the end of the year as a result of implementing the standard, but it was properly adopted. The second is GASB 102 on risk disclosures. Again, this is one that, you know, was properly adopted, but there's no change really in your audit report as there were no significant risks that need to be disclosed in your financial statements. Always good to bring back to the board that there were no audit adjustments. The numbers that were given to us to audit are the same numbers that are coming back tonight with our opinion without us having to modify those balances. We also had no uncorrected misstatements. So these are the smaller differences that we track as we go through the audit to make sure they don't aggregate into a material number. So again, clean audit results from the numbers perspective. Some of the other things that were required to discuss with you and with the Audit and Finance Committee is that we had no difficulties encountered in dealing with management or any disagreements that we need to bring to anyone's attention here as we went through the audit. We're not aware of any other consultations with other accountants. So this is if they didn't agree with something we were talking about and pitted us against a competitor. That's called opinion shopping and we'd want to disclose that and we don't have anything to bring to your attention there. And we have no other significant adverse events that happened during the audit. This is where things get a little different than the, than the normal annual presentation that we do, where normally we talk about the completed audit and that it's not a draft, that they're signed final. And tonight, these opinions are in draft form still. As Raquel alluded to, the Federal Audit Guide that we use to audit your federal compliance, like student financial aid and such, is normally issued around the July timeframe. And this year, it was not issued until the week of Thanksgiving. And so that created a significant delay and knowing whether the work that we've done complies with the annual standards that the federal government puts out. The California Community College Chancellor's Office actually provided an extension to all districts in the state of California from normally December 31st to February 14th, 2026. We're in the process of finalizing things with the district right now and anticipate that we will have things wrapped up here in the next week or so. So these opinions are in draft fashion. However, I can tell you that we anticipate issuing an unmodified opinion related to your financial statements, related to federal compliance and related to state compliance. So this is the type of opinions you want issued by your auditors on your financial statements. That means there were no findings or other compliance exceptions that need to be brought forward for, to be included in this report. It was like to include a little summary on the financial highlights for the year for the district. So at June 30th, 2025, there were total assets of just over $900 million and negative net position of $229 million, which is pretty typical for a community college district here in California because of your participation in purrs and stirs in your net pension liability and your net OPEB liability. And then you actually had a positive change in that position this year of $36.9 million. My last slide here, just to conclude, is that the district's financial statements are prepared fairly in all material respects. There were no audit adjustments. We have no findings this year. And just to add on to what Raquel said a few minutes ago, there's a lot of requests that go into completing an audit. I mean, literally thousands of requests that we make for information from different departments throughout the district at both colleges. And everybody's very helpful and provides information to us timely, which allows us to be here timely also to conclude the audit and share those results with you. So we appreciate all the support that we received throughout this audit process. With that, I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Trustees, any questions? Student trustees, any questions?
Trustee Casas. Just a comment, I'm glad we have no audit, audit requests. So I'm glad we passed with line colors.
Thank you. Thank you for all the work. Trustee Chang.
And nice to see you again. We appreciated your presentation to the Audit and Finance Committee just this past week. And it was raised there. Does this delay in the audit report submittal affect all public agencies and to what degree?
And so this actually affects any governmental entity that expends more than $750,000 in federal expenditures. Will have to have their single audit or their federal audit completed. That audit guide incorporates every federal grant that exists. And so the fact that that wasn't issued was very, created quite a bit of turbulence this year for everybody's audit, regardless of whether it was a community college or a municipality or anything else. We were fortunate as a national firm to have folks that sit at some of the advisory panels. We were fortunate as a national firm to have folks that sit at some of the advisory panels to be able to see a draft of, of the guide. So we were working from that in the hopes that that would become the final guide, which is allowing us to then be able to wrap things up quickly. And also just moving forward still and not waiting for that guide to come out to kind of start our work. So like I said, we anticipate being able to be done here before Christmas here with everything still.
And I would just add my thanks. I'm a CFO in my day job. So between the work that you do and the whole finance and accounting team, I understand what it feels like to go through an audit and all the nooks and crannies you look into to make sure that we're doing what we need to do. So I appreciate the, the time and effort it takes. Bless you all. And thank you for being a good partner in this work. This is an action item for us to accept this draft audit report. I'm wondering if we might have a motion for that?
Chang moves approval.
I will second.
Moved by Chang, seconded by Govatwa. Student trustees, in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Thank you. Trustees in favor, say aye.
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 Nobody opposed? I think I heard all ayes. Okay, passes unanimously. Thank you very much.
And everyone tries to get rid of me after the first item, and I have one more.
But wait, there's more. Okay.
But wait, there's more. I'll keep my comments brief here, which is that we're required annually to do an audit of the bond funds as well. So because of the bonds, both Measure C and Measure G were passed under Proposition 39, which lowered the passing majority to 55%. You're required to have a citizens oversight committee, which you have. You're required to spend the bond funds appropriately. You're required to have a financial audit and a performance audit done of the bond funds on an annual basis. So we completed that, and that's what this item is here on your agenda. The reports are clean opinions, both on the financial statement audit and on the performance audit, so good audit results there. And we'll be meeting with the Oversight Committee next week to present those results to them. Happy to answer any questions on this one.
Thank you. Do we have questions? Any of the staff have questions? Leadership? Okay. Also an action item, any motion?
Chang moves approval for both audits.
I'll second.
Moved by Chang, seconded by Blaze. Student trustees, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Trustees, all in favor, say aye.
All right.
You want to oppose? Okay, great, passes. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, next up, we have an information item from both our presidents. I will hand it over for some presentation.
Madam President, I'm going to have President Wayland and President Torres introduce the presenters, who will share a brief presentation on both colleges' equity plans.
Thank you very much. Like to introduce this joint effort on behalf of the two colleges to put forth the Student Equity and Achievement Plan. Each of the colleges is required to submit a plan. This plan will run from 2025 through 2028, and we've got Michelle Hernandez, who serves as our Dean of Institutional Equity and Engagement, who will be representing De Anza College this evening. Thank you, Michelle.
And representing Foothill College is Dr. Johnny Bird, who is our Dean of Equity and Inclusion. Thank you for your work on this plan.
Good evening, everyone. We're just going to jump right in, but I think it's important to say that this plan from both of our colleges was a collective effort. And though we get to present this information to you all, this is on grounds of so many other people that are not in the room here today. And so this next slide here is the agenda that we're going to quickly go over. This is shaped in the same way as a plan that will be presented to the state chancellor's office that's submitted through NOVA. And so we're just going to follow that same type of outline and template, so you have an idea of what is being sent to the state.
All right, good evening. As an overview of our plan, we have to let you know that it is initiated by us as deans in our institutional research offices. However, it's multi-layered. We ended up sending out different parts throughout the campus to different administrators, faculty and staff, and students who were able to provide input to the plan. And then our offices kind of synthesize that, and then it goes out to shared governance for vetting. So oftentimes, what we're looking at is how are we, in a race-conscious way, addressing our disproportionately impacted students who are in five different metrics that you'll hear about later, are not performing at the same level as their peers and counterparts?
Right, so to set up this slide and the other slides that you'll be seeing today, on the left-hand side will be De Anza College, and the right-hand side will be Foothill College, and then the top will be kind of the agenda topics for each of those different sections. Remember, this is a 30,000-foot level, so we're not going to go into great detail on any of these areas, because that would take the entire time. But that detail is in the reports that we have submitted. And so this, this first part is talking about lessons learned and where are we going? And so for Foothill College, we learned that our students are still kind of lost in the swirl at the institution. We need to do a better job at how do we give them next steps, better communication that is with them. But then also, actually, we, we decided that we're going to look through structurally and programmatically of how we're going to address that. And so one part structurally is our blueprint for success. It's incredibly important that our math, that's what we call our master plan, that we align all the works that we do with our master plan. So you'll see that later on. And then programmatically, Foothill Connect. How do we make our curriculum more culturally relevant for students who are in these classes?
Funny. At De Anza, what we're looking at is how do we fully integrate our strategies that are grounded and rooted in racial equity? And understanding that systems are racialized? And so how are we either going against that grade? Or how are we improving that so that we can take down the barriers and, and challenges that our students have and that are fostered by those systems? Our framework is racial equity plus our six success factors from the RP group, and looking at that as a equation to meet equity. So part of what we're doing is, if you are familiar with De Anza's Equity Plan Reimagined, it actually goes through 2028. So we, we got a little bit of help from that 2028 plan. So we're looking at how are we fostering a sense of belonging? How are we looking at equity-minded strategies and practices across all disciplines so that they meet the needs of the students? And also expanding our counseling capacity. We know that the ratio of our students to counselors is high, but we also know that their educational planning and their, their monitoring of their progress is paramount. So creating culturally affirming spaces is also important so that our students have a sense of belonging and have a community that helps to build their efficacy for success. As we are looking at where our students are disproportionately impacted, the state asks us to look at five core focus areas. Those areas are successful enrollment in courses, completion of transfer-level math and English, persistence from first term to second term, degree completion and certificate completion, and then transfer to a four-year institution. So those are the five metrics that we are asked to speak to and for us to do our, our great work at. So of the five, Johnny and I both picked one of each, so that you don't have to listen to us talk all night. And so for De Anza, we looked at our transfer-level math and English course completion within that first year. And so you may be familiar with our EPS, English Performance Services, as well as our MPS, which is our Math Performance Success Programs. And so looking at intrusive counseling, looking at time on task, prerequisites for our students so that they can complete, getting the guidance that they need early on in summer programming and bridge programming, excuse me, so that we can get them onboarded and get them into the classes that they need in a just-in-time, timely fashion, and giving them the support that they need. So yeah. Oh, the other thing that we're doing is the cost-conscious materials and textbooks. So looking at our online educational resources, zero textbook costs, and other cost-conscious ways of making sure that our students have what it is that they need to be successful in the math and English classes.
Foothill is focusing on, in this particular example, our enrollment section. And so calling attention to kickstart enrollment days. And so what does that mean? This is a new initiative that's been led by Dr. Laura Scaglory, and it is how do we do just-in-time enrollment for our students? Because oftentimes, they don't know when their priority registration happens. They are not enrolling for the classes because they're unaware of the deadlines. And so, and actually, the third part is there's barriers to when they're actually trying to enroll. So financial barriers, there's holds. How can we do a one-stop shop? And so that's essentially what the kickstart enrollment is. A one-stop shop that's mobile, it is on campus, it may change location from week to week, but we have it at least twice during the year. And so this has been highly successful for us, because the students don't, aren't running around into different areas. They're actually going to one place, they're talking to a counselor, to a financial aid specialist, an enrollment specialist to get them enrolled into that next quarter. All right, so intrusive, sorry, intensive college-wide focus. And I think it's important for me to say, when this portion of the report is submitted, it's saying, what would your ideal institution look like? For both De Anza and I, we talked about Black and African-American Latinx students, but I think it's important to say this is not at the detriment or at the exclusion of other students. And so we know that Black and African-American and Latinx students are disproportionately impacted on this campus, not just from a enrollment and retention standpoint, but from a structural deficit. That higher education was not built for Black and Brown students. And so how can we continue to make our systems and structures in a way that support them? The way that we're going to do that, looking at Foothill, is a simple statement. By 2028, Black and African-American, Latinx students will describe Foothill as a campus where their lived experiences are centered. How do we plan on doing that? Is with hard forward care. Another way, and what does that look like in action, is through our belonging centers. So our BIPOC, Pride, Wellness, Owl's Nest, we've started those initiatives. We have those spaces now, but they're just spaces. Students may feel accepted. We want them to feel a sense of radical belonging.
And not falling too far from the tree on that. De Anza is also looking at how are we creating space and opportunity for our students to have a sense of belonging? And for them to see themselves as successful by going through and being a part of, not only our guided pathways, villages, which are also culturally relevant, but also looking at how are we building within our efficacy of teaching practices to have culture, a culture of equity-based practices? To have students be able to integrate their credit for prior learning so that they are validated with what they're bringing to the classroom and to the proverbial table? We're also looking at intrusive academic counseling, making sure that students know that we care, those six success factors that we care, we're nurturing, they're valued. And so making sure that we see that they're not only on the path, but they're successful on the path, and how do we keep them there? Which are the pillars of our guided pathways? And then the other thing that I think that is worth mentioning is making sure that we're doing early connection and sustainable academic support. So yes, there's just-in-time support, but we want to see, have students see that they're academically supported throughout their entire career, not just their first year, not just in onboarding, but all the way through to completion and transfer. It's me again. So the, one of the new sections that was added to the plan this year was student educational plans, or SEP's. And with the SEP's, those are really the, the roadmaps, the guides for our students, because it tells them exactly what it is that they need to take in order to meet their academic or educational goal. And so what we were able to do is take a look at that and then look at how are we going to meet the needs of getting our students their educational plans? They get an abbreviated plan, which is one quarter, comprehensive, which is three or more quarters. And so what we really want to do is look at what is our scheduling doing? How are we making sure that we have an annual calendar so that, or a schedule of classes so that students know what to expect and when to take those classes? Leveraging our embedded counselors and their practices, their equity-minded practices for all of our counselors, so that they are providing wraparound services for our students? And then also making sure that our students receive early personalized planning and support based off where they may want to transfer in the future. But keeping them on the path is really important, and making sure that we're helping them as challenges and barriers make their way to their pathway.
Very similar at Foothill College. We need to break old practices. Lining it with goal one, liberate student success. If we continue to do the same things that we've done before and expect a different result, that's just madness. And so how do we adjust that? And so we're looking at the relationship between counseling appointments and ed plans, and actually finding the sweet spot between quality and quantity of the sessions that the students are having with their counselor. It is no surprise, we're not going to get significantly more counselors. That's just, the structures are there. It's not going to happen. It's like a 500:1 ratio, essentially. So how can we do, or more? Absolutely. But welcome, how can we use the resources that we have to reimagine what we're doing? And so it's looking at it from those two perspectives. So how are we making appointments? Do they have ed plans? And what's that relationship to persistence and retention? And looking at the quality of the appointment, quantity, hopefully getting that up, but not sacrificing on the quality. Then the final slide is vision 2030 alignment and coordination. I think it speaks for itself. And so in this particular one, I'm focusing in on dual enrollment. And with our dual enrollment, we have a very strong dual enrollment program, but what we're trying to do is kind of think of things just a little bit differently. Instead of providing one-off opportunities, one-off classes, let's think about how do we cluster the classes? So Cal Getzi, the magic four, which is English, math, communications, and ethnic studies. How do we provide those to the students? So now they're ahead when they come to us, or they go to any other place. They're always going to be a semester or quarter ahead. That's how we think about things slightly differently. That's how we're being innovative.
And at De Anza, what we're highlighting is our support for low-income adult learners. And so looking at, and you've probably heard that the population of our high school students is declining. Simply, people just stopped having as many kids in 18 years ago. So we, we see that decline. And so the shift for us is to look at our, our adult students and those who are in adult schools, and how are we doing dual enrollment with our adult school population? How are we making school accessible to them? Making sure that they have classes when they need them? Especially if they're working or taking care of children, making sure that we're providing the support that they need with the GED and other ways to assess their skill level as they're coming in, and then providing them with the support that they need when they need it. And then along with that is looking at fee waivers and making school, making college affordable for them, and so making sure that they are meeting the needs of, or the requirements for financial aid, and that they're completing those applications to help support their success.
Thank you.
Thank you so much. That was very well coordinated. And a great overview to these dozens and dozens and dozens of pages you've sent us, which we read. But nice to hear it from, nice to hear it from the source. Let's ask some questions. Yes, trustee Blaze?
Yeah, I had a question pertaining to the report about counselors. While we understand that we are somewhat restricted with our counselors, especially with the ratio that you mentioned, how do we realistically see us moving towards having a increased quality of appointments while still having that same framework in place?
So there's, there's lots of different ways that counselors can have appointments. You can have one-on-one appointments for, let's say, 30 minutes. You can have an hour appointment, 45. But you can also do group appointments. You can also move away from having the counselor do all of the work in a sense of mitigating some of those smaller questions. For example, where's the tutoring center? Right? We can have peer advisors do some of those works, so it's outside of the counseling session, which we want to hyper-focus on their educational plan at times. Right? And so I think that's the way that we can Right? And so I think that's the way that we can keep the quality, remove some of the easy low hanging fruit outside of that space and get to the real root of the cause or issues in that meeting with the student at that time. And so that there are different variations of what that could look like.
I will add that also technology is a good way for us to do that. So I know in our plan, we talked about degree works, students being able to self monitor and make changes, and then those be vetted through the counselor rather than sitting in an appointment with them. So looking at what we can do in, in terms of technology, degree works, looking at homegrown systems as well as more, more utilized systems. Degree works is the number one that comes to mind, but looking at how students can help self monitor. And then the peer advising is also very important.
Yeah, thank you. If there are any other questions to me, I'm wondering about the resources required. There, there seems to be emphasis on counseling, as my colleague mentioned, and other kinds of sort of infrastructure and communication help. Is that within our current resource structure? Or is that hiring more folks? What is your, what is, what's needed?
I can speak from, from my personal perspective, which I think it's a both and, right? I think we need to reevaluate our human capital and then also the resources that we have in, in a sense of shared resources across the district. So degree works, having, I believe we have multiple different platforms at each institution. How do we streamline that? Or how do we use the current systems we have and expand to have the Cadillac version of that? So we're actually maximizing the entire component. I think we have all the ingredients. Is it, maybe we need to adjust a little bit on X or Y to then have a different type of cake, you know, at the end of that?
Yes, and I would say that looking at, looking at the budget, not only with looking at how are we managing those resources and being able to, to, to make them flexible. But I think also we need to look at putting our money where it actually is needed. I know a lot of times we're looking at the budget foresee and it's like, wow, it's a lot of money. And then when you actually start breaking it down as to what we're doing, looking at personnel, I think is a huge, because let's face it, personnel is about 80% of anybody's budget or more. And so, and we're saying that we need the counselors, right? But we also have some opportunities, I think, to leverage funding where we have, we can do braided funding in order to get to what it is that we need. We've just got to sit down and do a, I think, maybe a think tank and really dissect that, the budget so that we can move things around and allocate them in the spaces that we're saying that we want to expand, grow or scale.
And as a follow up to that, how does that actually happen? So like, we have a, we have a current budget. So is the, is the next step of work around resources, you and your teams, doing as you described and then pulling in Vice Chancellor De La Rosa on? Like, when can we actually affect what's in the budget? Like, give me a little bit of color commentary on how that, how that happens. Like, the reason I asked the question is I, I've seen in places I've worked where we have the work happening, but the budget process is already off and running. And so it's hard to, to intersect at the right time. So I'm wondering how, how that works.
Yeah, I think that that's what kind of the, the elephant in the room, how are we doing that? For Deanna, I know our senior leadership team works very closely with the C budget and has looked at and is currently in the process of evaluating that budget and looking at where are the places and spaces that we can look at braided funding and see, making sure that we're staying, number one, in compliance with all those different levels of funding, but also looking at roles and responsibilities as to what people are doing, because our budget is heavy on, on personnel. But really being able to look at where are the places that we think we can trim and that other places on campus that can pick up those costs without us losing any efficacy of the, of the programming and the support that we're giving to students. But it is really a campus wide effort. I mean, I think it starts with our senior leadership team, looking at that, you know, 100,000 foot view, and then come into us as middle managers and, and working with the district to say, how, how do we identify the different areas of focus that we can shift those funds to meet the needs of students? Because at the end of the day, it needs to be student centered and it needs to be able to, to affect the students and impact the students where they, where they need it most.
I don't need to repeat everything.
Yeah, what she said.
It was right there. But I think what I'll also add is looking at our, our colleges, not as individual separate institutions, but collectively. And I think there's a lot of space to streamline efficiencies across both colleges, which should lead up to some dollars to then to reinvest in high impact practices. And so I may say that the two dirty words, artificial intelligence, that may be a space to help with productivity. Obviously, that needs to be vetted out, but I think there are spaces where we can lean into with not just about the human capital and hiring more folks, but how can we do more work or more refined work with the folks that we have without burning them out?
Thank you. That was great. That was more than I was hoping for. So I love it. Thank you for all that detail. Other questions? Trustee Chang?
Yeah, great responses. I enjoyed reading both reports. I think it gives us a real sense of what the areas of importance are at each campus and kind of where you're going to be heading over these next three years, three year plan, right? So question would be, are they then integrated into our other processes at the campuses? How often will we come back and look at, you know, how we're doing at, to assess, you know, during that three year period? Are we, are we making progress on the pilots? Are we doing, meeting some of the targets that we've put in place? One question. And then the second is just, give me some examples. I love these, this term that you've used, and it's throughout the reports, intrusive tutoring and intrusive counseling. Just give me a sense of what that looks like. But yeah, big one, big picture question first, and then the intrusive counseling and intrusive tutoring.
What was the big question again? First one was.
Are you going to assess during the next three years?
Yeah, there we got it. So luckily, the state chancellor's office is asking us each year to provide an update on the different metrics. They, each three year cycle, they slightly adjust and change what they ask for at the end of their year, essentially, isn't aligned exactly with the academic year or the calendar year. It's kind of an October, September, November-ish type of space. So each year, we will be reevaluating and seeing where we're going from, from that. From the talking point of intrusive counseling, for example, I think it as, how do we engage the student where they are and not with an expectation of where we think they should be? And so that is a piece of going out to them. It's a piece of having a framework of saying, these are the typical challenge points or areas of challenge that students are facing. Let's engage in that space early on instead of having a student come to us.
So first, first question, yes, we have the reports, but also the plans are integrated. So you should see some similar things come through in our educational master plan and our strategic enrollment plan. So you, you should see some of the same metrics that, that we're talking about here today with the equity plan in our other plans, right? So why, why do them all mutually exclusive? That doesn't make any good sense. So you'll, you'll see those. And then I know with, with us, one of the things that we've done is with our strategic plan, we have on our website, progress reports that are for each of our metrics. And for, when you see the equity plan and the strategic plan that we're currently in, you'll see that there's metrics there that we're speaking to and giving updates. But we do do annual reports. Actually, we have one due December 31st. And then for, for intrusive, intrusiveness for me, one, I'm a product of intrusive counseling and intrusive peer mentoring and intrusive everything. When I was at UCLA as an undergrad, it was not only just meeting students where they are, but demanding from students to engage with us. Like, why weren't you in class? I noticed that you haven't turned in. How come you haven't come by to get an education plan? Noticing, right, when we talk about those six success factors, right? That students feel valued, nurtured, engaged, connected. When we're talking about those, then we have to show that. And we show that in our classrooms when we're asking, hey, you weren't here last week, what's going on? Hey, you missed that counseling appointment. I need you to come back in. I sat and I did an education plan. I want you to come in and take a look at it. So not only just going where the students are, because we definitely need to do that. We need to be in spaces and places across the campus. But we also need to be intrusive and show that we care. I mean, think about your, if you, if you have children or you have people around you that you care about, if they're looking for a job, you're like, how'd that interview go? Did you get that application in? What's going on with that? That's what we need to be doing with our students.
Thank you for both of your presentations. I read through the equity plans. I was very interested. And it was a way for looking in the mirrors to look at ourselves and say, where, where can we improve? And in both of your plans, you suggested educational plans for the student when they, their first year. But both colleges have not succeeded in doing educational plans for all. It's just a, a small percentage of students. And studies have shown that when you do an ed plan, a student has much more success in the future. So I think we need to strive for that, and I hope we do, both colleges. And same as Trustee Chang, talking about intervention. That, I am also a product of intervention. While I was in college, my, one of my teachers said, Lori, you need a, I know what you're trying to say, but you're not saying it. Go to the tutoring center. So, and I, and I, and I believe so strongly that we have to have those red flags from our faculty, from our staff to, to look at those students. Like you said, Michelle Hernandez, about, you know, did your car break down? You can't come to class because you can't go to work because you got to fix your, you know, those basic kind of needs, questions. I think that's so important to help with success of our students. Now, one of the reports, which I thought was very interesting, Deanna College said, we need to look at automatic award degrees, award degrees. And I thought that was, I've never seen that. So I was thinking, a question to Jori, is this something that we can do? Because right now, our students have to apply for an associate degree. But our stats would go way up, I think, if we would automatically give a degree, award a degree with technology. Like, if you meet certain requirements, then you get your degree. And we don't, you know, you don't have to apply for it. And then we get the, I guess, the state or a community recognition for that. So I thought that was, I don't know, is that, would that be hard to do? Do we need like extra million dollar software for that?
Well, now that you mentioned budget, no. But actually, President Wayland, President Torres and I and their teams have been having conversations about ways to better leverage newer technologies to potentially support that process. So we're looking at that component as well as some of the pieces that were mentioned by our presenters for really a more holistic experience for students that empowers the students, but also gives counselors and tutors and others who are intervening or, or working with those students to have, you know, a full view and to have more capabilities when working with them.
Both colleges in their reports mentioned the program Connect. Could you tell us more about that? And it, because, because that's one of those early warning, the way I read it. Could you, could you tell us about that a little bit more? Or, or maybe we need a, a study session on that? I don't know, but this sounded really important to me for student success. Could you tell us?
Yes, so Connect is in our Student Services Division. And it is, it's just that, it's a way for faculty as well as students to signal help, right? So they can put a request into Connect. And that can be from the professor can say, hey, I noticed that, you know, Omar is, this is going on with him in the classroom. We'd really like to have somebody reach out to him. And so they would have, Connect would have someone reach out, say, hey, Omar, what's going on? We want to see what's going, you know, how we can help you be successful and to continue on your educational path. Likewise, a student can say, hey, I'm really struggling in this chemistry. I'm going to pick on chemistry. I'm really struggling. I thought I'd get that look from here, in this chemistry class. And it's a way for them to ask for help without having to be, you know, in the face of a teacher or surrounded by students when they're saying, hey, I need help. But it's a way for them to reach out and to get additional support when they need it. And then what happens when they put that in? It actually has like a referral tree. So if they need help with tutoring or basic needs or whatever, then it automatically will send that, that information to that particular service or resource so that that student can be reached out to, talking about intrusivity. They can be reached out to, to say, hey, we understand that there's some support that we can provide. How can we help you? I don't know.
Yeah, creating an environment of care. I mean, at the end of the.
Yeah, and I just hope that, you know, we don't rely too much on technology, that we do have the human touch, that that faculty member still makes that call. Or, so I, I think we're short, we're, there's a shortage of, of counseling staff, but we still need that human touch.
And I think, I think too, and not to interrupt, but I think too, our faculty are instrumental in getting the help to students that they need. They spend a lot more time on task with them. They have a lot more FaceTime with them. So the, the building of relationships that our faculty have with our students are really impactful to their success as well. So, and that goes into the equity minded practices, the pedagogical changes that are equity minded, that are high impact, high engagement strategies that our professional development office does a great job of providing workshops and opportunities, trainings for that. But yeah, our faculty are still instrumental and really the first point of contact when it comes to, oftentimes when it comes to students who are struggling.
And I, and I know our, our faculty, they do a great job. We wouldn't be number one and number two transfer rate in the state of California if it wasn't for a terrific staff and faculty. My, my final question, if that's okay.
Keep going.
This, this, these equity plans were a response to the chancellor on the issue of race. Going forward, now that we have the federal administration and they want to de-emphasize race, how, how have you received any instructions or how to go forward as we continue this dialogue?
Any instructions from our campuses? Is that?
Well, no, these, these, these equity plans were, were a direction from the state chancellor's office. So the state chancellor's office, the federal government, well, maybe that's a, a question for the, I don't know. I just feel like going forward, we're not, they want us to de-emphasize the use of race.
No, there hasn't been any ask from the state to change specifically, how can we be race conscious? That's interweaved throughout the entire report. They want us to do that.
Well, and I do want to comment that on your reports, Deanna especially, you did mention underserved whites. And I think Patrick Erns was an underserved white. So we do need to be conscious of that as well. Anyways.
I will say, that was a surprising one for, for us as we were looking at the data. We had lots of questions and we talked about it. But I think race conscious is not, isn't going anywhere. As a matter of fact, we've received notice from the state that says, keep going with the charge, that, that we're still going in this direction. I think too, one of the ways that I've kind of looked at it is, what are the ways, the, the places and spaces that, along the point that you're making, right? That it's been very race conscious and then now that we have this administration that isn't really, that is not supporting that. My thing is where are the places and spaces that we can engage our disproportionately impacted students in ways that bring about efficacy of their college experience that maybe the college going community doesn't engage in? For example, study abroad. About 10% of the college going community actually get an opportunity to, to study abroad. So how about us and be intentional and deliberate about our disproportionately impacted students to get them into programs like that? Because that gives them an experience, it gives them a story to tell, it makes them more interesting. It, it builds up their transfer application. Same thing with our honors program. Not every student is in honors. Every student could be in honors. They need to see themselves. They need to see themselves as an honors student. Deansa just joined Foothill as a UCLA TAP institution, Transfer Alliance program. So how do we get more?
They want us, they want us.
How do we, how do we get more of our students in the pipeline for honors? With having like four or 500 students out of 15,000 who are in the honors program, how do we build that up? And we look at, not only do we get more students in there, but how are we offering disciplines that are going to attract our BIPOC and other marginalized communities to be in programs like that that give them a transfer edge? It gives them a career edge by getting them into programs such as that.
Thank you.
I just want to pick up on something trustee Kastas said, because what I hear from her question and comment, more than a question really, and I think it's a very good one, is that it's important that particularly given the context we're in and the hostility the federal government is showing us when when we focus on issues of equity, that our story is consistently, and I'm going to use here Foothill's kind of Foothill's language, but I think it applies to both colleges, that our colleges respect the identity of all of our students. We, our colleges work hard to build community among all of our students and belonging for all of our students. And that we act with purpose to try to make diversity, equity and inclusion tangible and real. That is, I think, our core message. And I think that's what trustee Kastas was alluding to when she said, you know, we got to be paying attention to all underserved groups. And I think that's here, but it's an important story to always keep very prominent. So that's my comment.
Thank you. Any other questions?
Yeah, just a quick one. I also want to pick up on a thread that trustee Kastas touched on with regards to kind of the early warning systems that are in place. And we discussed Connect a little bit. Can you talk about some of the other, these kind of early warning systems, in particular those that don't necessarily rely on, you know, faculty seeing a problem and elevating it? What other early warning systems do we have?
I think it's a human centered approach. I mean, I think that's why both of our institutions are far and beyond others is because we start with the human first. And so the faculty is often that first point of contact in the classroom. In seeing of a student is struggling, okay, how can I better support you in using that tree, for example, through technology? So I think the human centered is that piece. And that's something that you can kind of train up and scale up with professional learning opportunities, better understanding the bias and the privilege and the power that I bring into spaces or faculty or staff bring into those areas. And once we start to unpack that, that's the place where people feel actually welcomed at each of our institutions.
Yeah, I definitely get that. Part of why I'm asking is, you know, as faculty, right? If I'm in the classroom and I see a student struggling, you know, I always think, what can I do? Right? How can I elevate this? But I also know as faculty, you know, you're lesson planning, you're prepping classes, you're doing a million things. And I'm in the fortunate position of I teach, you know, one or two classes of, you know, about 30 students. You know, if you're a full time, you know, you have a full class load, you know, with possibly dozens and dozens of students, it becomes a whole lot harder to juggle all those responsibilities and also have the ability to, you know, catch and support those students. That's just the nature of it, right? That's not a knock on the professors. I know the professors we have here are incredible professors, really diligent, really want to show up for their students. It's just a matter of capacity. So recognizing that they are the first line of defense, right? I'm just curious if there are other lines of defense that recognize that just human capacity.
Yeah, I would add that we have our embedded counselors in different areas across campus. So they are in touch with students and in touch with faculty. We also have embedded tutors throughout the campus in different disciplines where they're working one on one with students. And so there's, there is this sense of a student success team that are working with our students. Also having affinity spaces where students can go, like our student success and retention center, services center, where students can go when there's a collective, there's a community where they can say, hey, I'm struggling or I see, or and then having those check ins from from their embedded counselors. And I think a lot of the programs that we have really do seek to create that connection and connectivity with their students. And if you walk through campus, I think that there's a sense of how can I help you? That that caring campus piece of it as well to help support students.
Thank you.
And trustee Blaze, did you have a question?
Yeah, I had two main points. The first point was, I recall you bringing up the honors program at Foothill and Deansa. And it kind of reminded me of like coming in community college as a student, looking at both honors programs. And I was always curious as to why there were more like barriers of entry to Deansa's honors program. Like you have to write like an essay, you have to get like a faculty letter of recommendation or something. Whereas at Foothill, one of the main reasons I chose there is because like you could just apply to an honors class, right? And I feel like, like especially, I was not a great high school student. So being able to have the confidence that I could just apply for this class and give it a try and then be successful in it was really fundamental to my success here in community college. So I'm maybe a little bit just curious as to why that system is set up so differently. First question.
So I'm new here. I've only been on campus for just over two years. So I'm going to, I'm going to preface my answer with that. I think that there at the onset was of our program was a way to look at, how do we make sure that the student is serious and that they really want to be in the honors program? And so there was a system set up for application and acceptance. There's also in parallel to that, though, the opportunity that you had at Foothill, where you can say, hey, I want to try out an honors class. We clear you for that honors class and then you can take that honors course for that quarter. And then if successful, if you enjoyed it, if you want to move on, then you can put in an application. We are in the process of looking at our system. We've connected with Foothill. Our honors coordinators are talking about what are the benefits and challenges of that so that we can make it more accessible to our students. But I do hear you on that, but that was something that was in place before I got here. But that's my understanding as to why it's set up the way that it is. And why is it different at different colleges? I don't, I'm not.
You have a second question?
Oh, I did. Sorry. Yeah, the second question was pertaining to these tools such as Connect and DegreeWorks. As a student, I have access to both of those tools. And in my perspective, at least, they aren't the most intuitive tools to use. So with that in mind, I think I just want to voice that I want this whole process to be student centered, right? I want us to be reaching out to students and being like, how is DegreeWorks working out for you? How is Foothill Connect working out for you? Because I'm looking at these programs right now and it's a little bit confusing, to be honest. And I think that our, like the process in itself, we're doing a good job already. It's just being extra intentional about having students like have a seat at the table when we're actually designing these products so that students can use them properly. But yeah, that's all I had. Thank you so much for your presentation.
Thank you for that feedback.
Other question, question, yes.
Excuse me. I just wanted to thank Dean Hernandez and Dean Byrd for their presentation and sharing with us the student equity achievement plan. I'd be remiss if I didn't say anything because I am a counselor at Foothill College, if you weren't aware of that. But yeah, intrusive counseling is something that's been practiced since the 1970s. And intrusive probably sounds a little, the word, it's kind of fallen out of favor. The proper term is probably, that's being more popularized is embedded counseling as or proactive counseling. And so when you think about proactive counseling, it's like you are going to, again, where the students are at. And so it's really just intentionally reacting to and helping our students. So having been a counselor, as a first year experienced counselor in the learning community, being a point A counselor, and lastly, as the honors coordinator. Going back to trustee Blaze's comment about why Foothill is different. I was working with Debbie Lee where we actually upended the honors program and decided, you know, honors should be for all, just because of those barriers. And we really thought about it as an equity issue. So I really appreciate you bringing that up and that, yeah, we don't want students come here to the community college for another opportunity. And oftentimes, if that is something that's following them through high school, that becomes a barrier for them here at the college. And so we wanted to remove that barrier. And so that was the reason why the honors program at Foothill College is open to all students. So and those are my comments. Thank you.
Thank you for sharing that. Any other questions and comments? Before we let the deans sit down? Okay, thank you. This is an information item. However, you'll notice on our consent calendar, we have item number 10, which is to accept these plans. So thank you very much, both deans. Appreciate, clearly, we wanted to know more. And so we appreciate your patience with us. Thanks. Next on our agenda is our consent calendar. If there's anything anyone would like to pull from the consent calendar, please share that now. I would like to pull number four and number 18. Approved international travel and Measure G bond program district wide. All right. Anything else anybody would like to pull? All right, let's pull those from the consent calendar. We'll talk about them after the consent vote. Can I get a motion to approve the calendar, less number four and number 18?
Yes, Chang moves consent items five through 17 and 19 through 22.
Second.
Okay, motion by Chang, second by Landsberger. Student trustees, all in favor, say aye. Okay, we'll come back to student trustees. Maria, Maria left, so we'll wait till Maria comes back to do that vote. Trustees, all in favor, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? It didn't sound like it. Okay. We will wait until Ms. Blaze comes back. However, let's, Chester Lambert, do you have someone who can speak to number four and number 18 for us?
Yes, Madam President, first, let me find out what the question might be and then we can respond accordingly. Trustees Kastas.
Those, so this item is to approve international travel. One to, one trip to Mexico and one trip to Canada. And it's for one person in each situation. I, I just don't see the substantial benefit to students with this expense from the general fund. Our taxpayers should not pay for some kind of learning that they can get within the United States. So I am going to vote no on this, on this item. Do you have a specific question about it? No. Okay, Chancellor Lambert, do you have any comment on that? You don't have to, I'm just asking.
As, as each of you are aware, international education, a global experience is essential to the success of any individual learner. And as a result of that, as a district, we have made a commitment to provide those international experiences, not only for our students, but for our faculty and our administrators, who are very essential to setting up the programming, making sure there's going to be positive experiences for the students ultimately, and to enhance the professional development of our faculty. And so, and that's something we've been uniformly in support of.
Thank you. Well, if this, this included students, like a, like an international trip, I would definitely support it.
The other important piece is this, this has already been approved. So we're just bringing it to the board just to make you aware that it's been approved.
Okay, well, I'm going to make everyone aware that I don't approve of it. Okay, yes, thank you.
Thank you. As a faculty member, trustee Kastas, I've sat here for a few different years where you've made your concerns about international travel very well known, pretty much every time it comes up.
I'm consistent.
You are very consistent. And and it might be a good idea for us to engage perhaps in some dialogue outside this meeting. But faculty very carefully consider where they want to spend their professional development time. And I very quickly looked at these two programs that they're, that they're looking for. And I'm not certain that there are comparable opportunities within the US for these particular two programs. And while I applaud your dedication to caretaking the public money, I think that we also need to have some faith in our faculty when they apply for these opportunities. They are the experts in the field. They know what they're best trying to get out of their professional development. And while we certainly do want to be good caretakers and make sure we are not expending dollars that we could expend elsewhere by staying local to the US, I think very rightly, as Chancellor Lambert puts out, we are increasingly in a globalized society. Opportunities occur around the world. And, you know, we're going as far as Canada and Mexico. So it's just, as far as international goes.
Trips to Taiwan in the Netherlands. I just think.
I'm simply concerned when there's a blanket opposition. That's all. And I just want to make sure, like, maybe we can have some.
It's not like it, if there's students and it's a trip to learn about archaeology, we've, we've supported that in the past in Africa. We've done that in South America. So no, it's just, this is just a step too far for me. And and it's just a very personal opinion. So, you know, we can talk later.
Absolutely. I just wanted to express the concern as a faculty member and represent my constituency. Thank you.
Thank you. And thank you for that. Let me take a pause here with the return of student trustee Blaze. The, we voted on the consent calendar while you were gone. So we pulled two items from it, number 14 and number 18. Four, four and 18, I'm sorry, four and 18. And so I called for a vote. The trustees have voted. I'd like to know if the two of you approve the consent color, consent calendar minus number four and number 18. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Okay, thank you. All right, let's take a vote on number four, item number four.
Yeah, I think you need a motion. I'll move item four.
I will second.
There's no motion or it's an information item only for number four?
Then why is it on the consent calendar?
It's an information item.
No, it's part of the consent calendar.
But it's no action because it's.
No, it's part of the consent calendar. It requires.
That's approval of consent calendar.
Is it essentially just accepting an information item?
No. It's our ratification of actions. It's already been taken, but we're required to.
The board is required to ratify something I've approved.
Right.
All right, so trustee Landsberger moved for approval. I think trustee Govatwa seconded that. All in favor, student trustees, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Trustees, all in favor, say aye.
Yes.
Aye. All opposed, say nay. Nay. Thank you. Passes. Okay, let's move to item 18. Again, it was trustee Kastas with a question. Would you like to pose the question? Yes, I'd like to know how this compares to item 30. This is a modernization, modernization of affordable student housing and McLaughlin Terrace service order. It's by Gilbane Company. I thought they were already managing the bond. Could, could we have clarification on this? Thank you.
Certainly. Good evening. Five years ago, September 2021, the board approved Gilbane. We did a formal RFQ and Gilbane was the selected firm to not only do bond program management, but also to do project and construction management of any bond projects. So Gilbane was approved to do the program, but now we have individual projects while they provide staff to help us manage those projects, both in design and in construction.
So I understand that Gilbane, we paid them over a million dollars to manage the bond. Why are we paying them a separate amount to manage the McLaughlin affordable renovation? And I just need clarification on that. And we didn't speak before the board, so you did make it clear. I just want the rest of the board to be.
This is not unusual. Each project that we bring to the board for approval, Gilbane has, has submitted service orders. That's why this is service order 22, I believe. So any previous projects that we've had, because we needed staffing to help us manage and do the design and the construction management of the projects, Gilbane was the one that we selected based on the RFP that we put on five years ago in 2021.
So what, what Joel is saying is we did put it out for bidding. And and because I was surprised that, that the cost to renovate and the management of the renovation was close to $350,000, $100,000. So it did go out to bidding and it. So, uh, it did go out to bidding and it was the lowest bidder. So with that, I feel more comfortable, uh, voting for this.
We had multiple firms. We had Swinburne, we have Brailsford and Dan Levy. And I think we have about three other firms bid and Gilbane was the one that, uh, we went through the whole process. We had a large group of folks who reviewed all the submittals and, um, and the pricing.
Thank you.
Thank you. Trustee Landsberg?
Yeah, I, I think there's some confusion here, and just for my own edification. Gilbane is our program manager, correct?
They do program and they help us.
I understand, but that's what the millions of dollars are for.
Correct for the entire.
Managing the program. This is project management.
Exactly.
So this is a, this is a piece that's not covered by their program manager agreement.
That is correct.
Okay, great.
Any other questions on this item? Okay. Uh, can I get a motion?
Chang moves approval of 18.
I'll second. Uh, moved by Chang, seconded by Blaze. Uh, student trustees, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Thank you. Trustees, all in favor, say aye.
Yes.
Aye. Anybody opposed, say nay? Thank you. Passes. All right. We're moving on to board business. Big business, strategic plan, business, size business. President Torres, are you on for this one?
I am.
Let's hear it.
Well, good evening, trustees, and thank you so much for the opportunity to present Deansa College's 2027 through 2030 Strategic Plan. As we are calling it up, and I think I'm going to need the little clicker, uh, I will call your attention first to the actual document you have before you, which is a copy. Thank you, Carla. It is a, a copy of the strategic plan, which I'll be referring to. You also received the copy of the Strategic Enrollment Management Plan. I'll briefly speak to that later. But you've got the strategic plan before you. And the presentation tonight is designed to essentially provide some background on where we're at relative to our current strategic plan and the changes to the new strategic plan. Uh, we'll talk about our goals. We have three goals, uh, followed by a multitude of objectives. Uh, we'll talk about some of the changes that were made in this planning and how it connects to our future work at the college as we think about our upcoming educational master plan and facilities, master plan for both the college and the district. And then, of course, a shout out to the amazing folks that have led this effort. So first, you'll see on the next slide, we've got the current strategic plan for Deansa, which does run through 2027. And we've got the new plan that, before you, that will run from 2027 through 2030. And a couple of comparisons and contrasts to the two plans. First, our current plan is really a hybrid of Deansa's strategic plan and educational master plan, all put into one document. Uh, whereas what we are, uh, working to do in this next iteration is start with the strategic plan, which will essentially outline the what, what is it that we're going to do? And then how we're going to do it will then be through the educational master plan. And so in our previous, uh, which is our current plan, our goal with, within the 10 goals was to close equity gaps to within 5% uh, for all of the noted metrics and all of the impacted groups, which we're making some good progress on that. Uh, again, in the next iteration, the strategic plan will focus on what it is that we're doing. The educational master plan will be the what are we doing, or how are we doing it, rather? In our current plan, we have 10 goals. In the new plan that's before you, we've got three goals, all of which are mapped to Chancellor Lambert's priorities, five priorities. And we've got about 150 quantifiable objectives. Now, they're quantifiable in the sense that they can be measured. Uh, but in the same token, uh, there's a lot of qualitative aspect to it. But we really want to do, hold ourselves accountable and to track how we are qualifying, uh, those objectives. And I, and I see the looks, so I'll talk a little bit more about that in just a moment. Uh, there are three goals. The three goals are creating equitable access and pathways. Second goal is elevating equitable engagement and success. And the third goal is galvanizing community impact and innovation. And again, all three of those goals tie to the chancellor's priorities as approved by the board recently. And then within those goals, we have a series of objectives. Now, I didn't create a slide for the objectives because there would be way too many. But if you look at your booklet, you'll see that what we've done is we've identified baseline targets for the 2025, 2026 year. And then when this plan actually begins in 27, 28, where do we want to be by the time we get to 2027, 2028? And by the end of the strategic plan, where do we ultimately see ourselves as a campus and, and as a district relative to this plan? Now, I saw the looks and I can imagine, it's like, wait a minute, what is all of this that we're doing? But I would remind the board, as I've reminded our campus, that the state chancellor's office is really holding us, uh, accountable for all of this work. And so you, in, in many of these instances, where you'll see the 10 levels of disaggregation. So for example, if I look on page 28, uh, under objective 2.4, which says to increase the number of students earning a certificate of achievement. And then you'll see a series of 10 disaggregations from economically disadvantaged students, veteran, foster youth, all the way down to, um, unknown ethnicities. Those were disaggregations that when the college, colleges and the district attended this past spring, uh, we attended a regional convening for Vision 2030 from the state. These were disaggregations that were, uh, essentially communicated to us as things that the state would like us to focus on. And there were targets associated with those, uh, objectives that we have listed here. In some instances, we had conversations on the campus to decide, you know what? We think that by 2030, we do concur with the state that we do believe we can accomplish a 20%, 10%, 30% increase. And in other instances, we had very good conversations with our academic senate, classified senate, our students and impacted stakeholder groups. And we said, you know what? We don't think we're going to quite be able to make it, uh, to the point that the state has extrapolated for us by 2030. And so in good conscience, we're going to make some adjustments to those numbers. And so we, we had a series of town halls, office hours, road shows to our DASG, to our academic senate, to our classified senate, uh, multiple listening sessions. And through all of that, which initially the draft plan had about 100 objectives, by the end of the roadshows, we got closer to 150 because faculty and staff were interested in adding additional aspects to hold our campus and to hold each other accountable to our students. And that's what you see in our strategic plan, goals and objectives. And so the new planning model is a foundation. It's the what are we going to do and what we're holding ourselves accountable to between now and 2030? Then we have other supporting documents. For example, in 2026, we're going to start working on the educational master plan, which will really focus on how we're going to achieve these objectives in the strategic plan. And we've got other documents like the Strategic Enrollment Management Plan, which is another example that the campuses had, uh, long withstanding conversations about how we're going to accomplish our enrollment target goals by 2030 and more, as you see on the screen. Departments, divisions, administrative units will be able to expand on the how when they tell their story of how we're going to accomplish that, which is noted in the strategic plan. That'll be through the educational master plan, which we'll be working on in 2026. And eventually, our work on the educational master plan will then inform our facilities master plan in conjunction with our work with the district. So again, a lot of work here, and you can get a sense of the timeline. And I'd be remiss if I didn't express a huge debt of gratitude to the entire Deansa College campus, our team sitting up here, administrative team, a lot of conversations regarding this new strategic plan going in a different direction for the campus. And again, holding us accountable to the Vision 2030 goals. Special shout out to Dr. Mallory Newell, our amazing director of IR, who really helped lead this work in concert with the many folks that were engaged in this work, including our senior leadership team and some incredible input from our academic senate, from our classified senate, from our DASG. And again, you get a sense of the timeline throughout the fall quarter of the various roadshows and various sessions, and ultimately approvals that we received campus-wide for this strategic plan from both the senates, academic and classified, as well as our DASG. And with that, any questions?
Who has questions? Leadership out there, do you have questions? This is a lot.
Congratulations.
I've, um, in the gory details question. And I think you, the way you explained it was taking the, uh, direction from the state chancellor and then trying to figure out, like, if it made sense for us in our current situation. Um, and so some of the goals are massaged a little bit based on what we think we can do. And it looks like across the board, the first column and the second column, there's no movement, but the movement is meant in the 29 to 30 range. So, uh, on, on some of them that say maintain, is that because we're happy with what they are? Or is it because we think it's not a priority in this, in this timeframe? And we're going to have to address it later.
No, great question, uh, Board President. I, I think it's a combination of recognizing that because we can, became community-supported basic aid, we want to be very careful, like, for example, if we're going to start creating new programs and non-credit or scaling up and dual enrollment or whatnot, we want it to be very incremental and very strategic, recognizing that because we're community-supported now, we can't do too much at once. So a lot of those baseline figures between 25, 26 and 27, 28 do reflect that. It's also a combination of looking at where we're at as, as a campus and recognizing that we're going to need some time to ramp up in terms of our planning and in terms of trying to put new practices and operations into effect so that we can continue to move the needle. And so a lot of that, as you, as you very aptly noted, there is similarities between the two columns. And then we'll start seeing after the 27, 28 year, we'll start incrementally, year by year, leading up to 29, 30, the goal is to hold ourselves to what we have noted there. The other thing I want to point out is we had conversations with our campus about the fact that, you know what, if we don't reach those targets by 29, 30, it's not a slap on the wrist. It's okay. Let's look at the leading and the lagging indicators and see what work we have done to move the needle. If we succeeded in moving the needle, great. If we did not, that's okay. That will then be a conversation for the next strategic plan that would run from presumably 2030 through 2033.
And does each of these, um, areas have an owner on staff? It's like this, it's just a lot to manage, right? So like, I assume there's like waterfall goals under these that go to individuals and then each section has an owner, right?
Yeah, you know, surprisingly, we're doing all of this already. And it wasn't until we actually started having conversations on campus about really disaggregating the work that we're doing, looking at the student-centered funding formula, looking at what the state chancellor's office is expecting of us, and then putting those ideas in, onto paper in terms of tracking ourselves. And again, holding ourselves accountable. We recognize through the brainstorming exercise, we're doing most, if not all of this already. And in fact, some of the things that are on there, especially under goal three, a lot of those things were from student survey. We start looking at how students feel a sense of belonging. Uh, do students feel like they have the necessary mental health support and services on campus? A lot of that is from our annual student survey. We collect that information every year. We have data. We have a framework to see how we are tracking from a student satisfaction percentage perspective. And then based on that data, we've set targets for ourselves to continue to improve.
Thank you. Other questions?
I have a couple of questions I'd like to ask around, uh, some of the stats in here that struck me. Uh, and I'm, I'm curious, I'd like to get some thoughts. So one of them was around the persistence rate. So, which if I'm understanding correctly, is kind of just the rate at which, kind of a rate of attrition, right? For students who.
Term to term.
Yeah, exactly. Um, and sort of seeing the gaps in persistence rate between, you know, low-income students, especially black students, who at one point I think had like a double-digit, uh, persistence gap. Um, but I'm curious to kind of contextualize those numbers. Um, so I'm wondering if we have data looking at other districts and other schools um, and how, uh, what kind of persistent rates and persistence gaps they've had and how they've addressed, uh, some of the different impacts on different demographics.
No, great question. Uh, there is a statewide Data Vista dashboard where you can disaggregate the Data Vista dashboard to look at not only how individual colleges are doing, but also how districts are doing as a whole. And so that information is available to us. Uh, you know, as you heard, the incredible presentation from our two presenters on the student equity and achievement, uh, program plans for both of the colleges. All of the work that we're doing really holistically feeds into what we seek to accomplish in our strategic plan. So, you know, again, you heard me just a few minutes ago talk about the next step in this process is formulating our educational master plan. We have now a strategic enrollment management plan, which Deansa never had, at least in recent years. We have our student equity and achievement plan. We have technology plan. All these different mechanisms, how they coalesce and how they, uh, trustee God, how they holistically support the student and how we move the needle, in the case of your question, relative to persistence. We're doing all of this work so that we can move the needle on supporting our African-American black students and the other disaggregated groups. So all of those plans are designed to help us reach the milestone targets that we have set for ourselves here in the strategic plan. The strategic plan really serves as the foundation for the work that the college is doing. Once you've got that foundation emanating from the mission and grounded in the strategic plan, then everything else, it's essentially how we're going to accomplish what we noted in here.
I appreciate that answer. I appreciate all the work that's being done, uh, to address those persistence gaps. And I'm definitely going to be interested in looking at the, the public portal and seeing, uh, some of the other districts and schools. Uh, the other one I wanted to touch on, and I, I was looking to try to find the exact page it was on. Uh, but I really appreciated the stat breaking out, um, uh, the ratios of students, different types of staff, right? Faculty, administrators.
Goal three.
Yes, yeah.
Goal three.
Uh, and one that struck me in particular was the disparity between faculty and students for Latinos in particular, which I think was the highest disparity that I saw. Uh, 25% of students, uh, but 10% of faculty. Uh, which depressingly enough is actually better than the nationwide average because, you know, in a country of 20, 20% Latino residents, uh, only about 5% I think are professors. And so I'm curious, uh, recognizing that this is an issue nationwide. But is this sort of, is there a conversation ongoing around how to tackle that within Deansa and address that?
Absolutely. You know, Deansa College, uh, fluctuates in and out between being an HSI, which of course is at, at 25% of your student population. You're considered a Hispanic-serving institution. This year, we happen to not be. We're, we're at about 23%. So we're just shy. But in other years, we have been at 25% or higher. I think a lot of that is the amazing work that Diana Rose and her team do. Diana's done incredible work in really encouraging all of us to really think about our job descriptions, think about how we're recruiting, where we're recruiting, and then having those conversations with the committees. And, you know, certainly within the college to make sure that we, due to the best of our ability, bring in that diversity. So when I recommend, you know, candidates to the chancellor for the board to approve, that we are essentially best representing our students. And a lot of that really to start with HR. So I want to thank Diana publicly because she's done a great job in really giving us the tools that we need to try to meet those targets that we've set for ourselves.
All right, well, thank you very much for that answer. And, uh, thank you again for this amazing pair of reports, really, a lot of really great information there. So thank you for that.
Any other questions? Uh, this is an action item on our agenda. Deansa would like their strategic plan approved. Uh, would someone like to make a motion that way?
Make a motion to approve the plan?
I will second.
All right, moved by trustee Kossas, seconded by trustee Govatwa. Student trustees, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Trustees, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Okay, great. Thank you very much. Up next, board business, item number 24, uh, proposed renaming, proposed denaming. I believe Chancellor Lambert, you want to launch this one?
Yes, President Godfrey. It is my honor and pleasure to present this proposal to name the ATC building after Steve Wozniak. There are very few community colleges in the country and very few universities in the country who can say they have an illustrious alum who was a co-founder of. who can say they have an illustrious alum who was a co-founder of, if not the most admired, among the most admired companies worldwide. And we're so honored that we have Steve Wozniak attended Deans from nineteen sixty-nine to nineteen seventy-four, earning over one hundred and fourteen units in programming studies. As you know, he's a co-founder of Apple Computers. They unveiled their first Macintosh computer at the Flint Center, formerly the Flint Center, in nineteen eighty-four. Wozniak has gifted significant computing artifacts to Deans College valued at at least, if not a little more than a million, with several pieces of equipment that are signed by Wozniak and now displayed at the ATC. Through our connections with Mr. Wozniak, has worked with Apple in recent years and has advocated and received grants from Apple as well. And so I could just go on and on, but you get the idea. But I have, there's two folks here who would like to speak on this item. And so I know they have filled out forms, I believe. So we have the department chair, Mary Pape. And we also have John Swenson, a retired faculty member here. So I would like to turn it over to them to just make some brief comments.
Do I need cards for that? I don't have any cards.
No, I told them I'd just do it in my, sorry about the card reference.
Thank you very much.
And we have Ben Dubin here with us as well.
Thank you very much for that introduction. I'm really thrilled to be here. I'm thrilled for our students. They're the ones who don't know this, plus our communities, plus industry. Who knew that Steve Wozniak was here for five years, studied programming primarily, you know, and then went on to impact the way you and I live our lives more than any other Deans student, okay? I mean, we all have, we have an AI debate. Well, we can only debate AI because we have computers, because we have phones, because we have GPT four. It all started with Steve. And he's been close to the college and he's a wonderful guy. Let me just ask Ben Dubin to second. Ben's my partner in this. Ben's been on the Foundation Board for twenty-six years. And Dennis Seema has also worked and Eric Woodbury, the president of the Senate.
Yeah, so it's really an honor to to have Steve just glowing with this idea of naming a building after him. He wants to have, you know, we were calling, thinking about calling it the Steven G. Wozniak Building. He's no, the Wozniak Technology Center, right? He is ecstatic and we think that we can raise a lot of extra money as well with the naming process of this. And I think the national and international exposure of Wozniak Center Technology, because Apple, Sertino, will help with even our international students. So just really excited about this.
Thank you, Ben.
Hi, I'm Mary Pape, Computer Information Systems at Deans College. And about a year and a half ago, there were a group of students in the ATC building, standing outside of the CIS lab, and they were waiting to participate in the regional competition for the International Collegiate Programming Contest. And I noticed a group of students standing around the glass case. And I walked over there and they were all amazed, looking at the Apple two D computer, realizing that that was the start of why they were there today and was as was as real notes were there. And so I captured a couple of pictures. And when I ran into Was at the Park, I shared those pictures with him. And he had eyes twinkling because he was happily surprised to see how engaged the students were and how he had been a mentor for so much. And so I just think this renaming is so appropriate for, as a, for our students that come to visit us and our students here, all the students. Thank you.
Thank you, Mary. But that, we're have happy to answer any questions. I'm really excited about this. I, Ben and I have had the opportunity at the direction of the chancellor to brief you all on it. We're just really excited. We're very pleased with Steve's reaction. We'll be working with him. And we'll have an event at some point in time, a formal reopening, which will involve the community and will involve all of you and and as many people as we can. We think it's important for our students to know this.
Also, Madam President, I'd like to give President Torres the opportunity just to say a few words as well.
Thank you, Chancellor. Very much appreciate the board's consideration of this naming. I'll just add that we've had an opportunity to also have a conversation through our governance process with the academic senate. Thank you, John, and for doing a presentation at the senate and there was overwhelming, great discussion. I know Mary was there as well. And very much support on the part of our faculty in the senate for the naming of the Advanced Technology Center after Steve Wozniak as well. Thank you.
Thanks for sharing that. Yes.
I was just curious if there was a cost associated with renaming the building? And then also if it meets the board's standard for a significant contribution, I guess, to merit the the name change?
I don't know about the cost. I assume someone does.
I think we're anticipating that there will be a minor cost, but that we're going to be able to fundraise for that so that it will not be of a cost to the district in terms of the the name that's actually put on the building.
Okay, and then how about the question about the the gifts?
The the gift is valued, as the chancellor mentioned, over one million dollars. So it is a significant in-kind donation to the district, which is our property.
There's at least four computers and various other things that were personalized Steve Wozniak, especially in Apple One, made by him with wooden case with a handwritten manual written by him. And we did some analysis on other ones that have sold and some have sold for nine hundred thousand plus. This has been owned by Steve and then his mom had it. This is unique and it's an artifact that's very amazing. So.
Thank you. Thank you for sharing that. You look like you have more.
Well, then I would ask, are we selling ours to get a million bucks?
I'm gonna say, yes, trustee Casas.
I'm very excited about this nomination. I remember years ago, I attended a birthday party at Steve Wozniak's house in Santa Cruz Mountains for his daughter's first birthday, I and a thousand other invitees. Regarding the artifacts, the wooden case that you have in at the Deans, I know the carpenter who made the wooden case. It was the brother of employee number six. And I was renting a room out of his house when I was in law school. So that's the Wigginton Brothers. So this this event that we're doing tonight is going to inspire many, many students to enroll in our college district. So thank you for your efforts to make this happen. I think it's it's a big plus for our district. And unless there's any other comments, I'd like to move for approval.
Follow-on question. As you talked about the artifacts, they are ours, they are our turned over to us, they are our items. Okay, because, yeah.
And as part of this, John is personally signing up with me to help with fundraising for this event. And we have some connections at Apple as well. And we'd like to raise exhibit money for the opening of this building and, you know, the naming. And we'd like it to be five hundred thousand, two million dollars plus, which I think we can do.
Thank you. We have a motion. Other question?
Okay, I have a question. Thank for your for your presentation. And may I ask, once it was approved, when, I mean, when the ATC will use the new name? I mean, once it's
We have an agreement that goes along with this, which is all the details of the naming. And we'll should be to get that signed, if all goes well, in the next couple of weeks, maybe even this week. We're having lunch with Steve on Wednesday. And we've gone over that agreement with President Torres and Chancellor Lambert. So we're working toward closing.
We're gonna try to get it done either winter or spring quarter. I'm hopeful we can do it in the winter quarter. And we'll have a big celebration and involve the community and all of our students will be invited. So I, we, we have it in mind. We'll just hope that we can get it done as quickly as we can.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
All right, we have a motion. Any other questions or a second? Can I get a second?
Second.
Thank you. Okay, moved by Casa, seconded by Landsberger. Student advisory vote, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Trustee vote, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Thank you. Thank you. Passes. Thank you for the work. Okay, item number twenty-five, Measure G, General Obligation Bond Update. This is an information item. Chancellor Lambert, do we have a presentation for this part?
Yes, we do have. Joel is going to do a brief presentation for us.
Just really a quick one. Before I start at the consent items that the board approved, there's the Human Resources Report and then there is Joshua Atkinson, who is our project manager focusing on sustainability projects. Before coming to the district, Joshua did a stint at the chancellor's office working with the Board of Governors Climate Action Plan, which our Sustainability Action Plan and Energy Master Plan were based on. So Joshua.
Welcome, Josh.
All right, now on to the measure G. This is just a brief update on the creative arts. This first slide, the design build team of Swinerton DLR was approved by the board September. So they got to work right away and met with the stakeholders and on the right is a list of user group meetings. And on the left, you can see just a quick study of where the building is going to go and its adjacencies to the spaces. And these are some of the design principles that's going to go into the Creative Arts Building. It's a student-centered complex. It's a essentially, since this is at the front of campus, it's a showcase for gateway to the campus. And of course, to maximize program opportunities for flexibility for students and a design that strong responds to campus sustainability goals. And this is just a quick timeline. And what I want to point out is the last date, which is April twenty-three, twenty twenty-seven, is when we will start construction for the Creative Arts Building. I apologize, it's too slow, but there's two pages, two pages of these. And essentially what these are are just some of the spaces that are going to go with associated square footage. So we want to make sure that they're all taken into consideration. So we don't have, we don't build a building that's either too small or too big. It's just a second page. And then lastly, it's just the immediate timeline that's going to happen and note that there will be a, or there was a submitted budget. And right now, what we're trying to do is reconcile with the budget and and the scope. And any questions or comments?
Let me check before. Any questions?
A pair of just quick question on the community room and classroom space. Do you have a sense how that compares to conference rooms A and B?
We have always talked roughly about ten thousand square feet. And so that is not necessarily set in stone because we could make it a little bit smaller if other spaces within the complex can be used as a community center or as a meeting space for the community. I don't know the exact square footage of A and B over at the campus center. I can give that to you, that information to you. Yes.
I was gonna ask if the real estate remains about the same as far as like the size of labs and classrooms or have they increased in size?
We are trying to remain true to what has been discussed by Dean Skeger. So there may be some adjustments. Again, we're still in the programming stage, so nothing is set in stone yet. So they may increase, they may reduce depending on what the conversation is moving forward is or are.
Other questions? Trustee Casas.
Why is construction starting in two thousand twenty-seven?
Well, we're still beginning right now. We're still in the program phase, but and of course, we still have DSA to contend with, which potentially
It just seems so long. The bond passed.
In twenty twenty.
Right.
But remember, we had COVID, which took us out for about a year, year and a half.
But this is even with COVID. It seems like an awful long time.
Also had a false start. Remember, we had the mega project and then we couldn't figure out what
So you say you'll start construction in two thousand twenty, like when, the beginning and middle?
I think
When do you do it? April twenty-third, twenty twenty-seven.
I don't want to
I didn't hear that.
It's not exactly April, but it's around that time. I don't want to, I don't, I don't want to say that it's
We're holding you to April twenty-third, twenty twenty-seven.
Digging, but it's around the springtime.
I wrote it down. All right.
I didn't add this. I apologize. I missed that. I should have just said spring twenty twenty-seven.
Thank you.
I have one.
No, yeah, Eric, go first and then Garrett, you're on.
Thank you. I just want to briefly report out that I've been, I've been keeping my eye on this as the senate president. I've been engaging with my faculty members in the Creative Arts Division. And I just want to communicate very clearly to the board that their attitude and their their feeling of being valued and involved has increased one billion percent. They are, they feel very internal of the process. They're very, they they report great satisfaction with how with how things have gone thus far. As someone that's not in their division, however, I will say that I'm looking forward to getting more information. We're hopefully looking forward to in January, hearing a more, a more general presentation to the campus at large about where things are going. It does sound like some things have shifted in terms of not everything moving into this new building, like we don't have enough enough funds currently to move music over, for example. I also share some concerns about having that sort of community space and how that's going to be available to be programmed. I've heard some different reports on that. We're, we had, like Joel said, there's still a lot of programming going on. So I, and I haven't heard any of the details that are even there yet, but those are certainly the things that I'm keeping an eye on. But really, to come back to the positive note, like the the faculty and the staff that are most directly impacted by this have have reported great satisfaction with how things have gone, which is, if you recall, a huge shift from where we were a couple of years ago. So I wanted to give you some good news there.
Thank you. Kara?
I'd like to put a shout out to our Director of Capital Construction, Roseanne, who has been working with the staff over at the S as well as with our design building to come up with this project.
And just a quick one. I saw you skip over the timeline. Quick, when would the actual building, like project, come to the board to see the design for that?
Let me get back to you. We're in the programming. So once we have something settled and we reconcile both the scope and the budget, we can have something more concrete and we will invite the design build team to do that presentation.
What does GMP stand for?
Guaranteed Maximum Price.
Okay, thanks.
And reconcile the project and the budget sounds scary.
It always is at the very beginning because you always want more than what you can afford. And that's why we are having this conversations. And that's why we went through the design build process or design build delivery, because it's a lot more collaborative than designed bid build.
Okay. This is an information item, so we won't be taking any action, but I want to make sure that the questions are answered. Is there any other, any other questions? Okay, great. Thank you very much. Okay, item number twenty-six is also an information item. There's no presentation for it. However, staff will entertain questions if there are any questions. Okay, great. Thank you. Ditto for number twenty-seven. Let us know. This is the listing of district investments as of the end of Q three. Are there any questions on this? Great. Everybody read their stuff in advance. Again, number twenty-eight, Annual Risk Management Report, also another required report, information only. Any questions on this? Grab the hook there. All righty. Okay, let's move to item number twenty-nine. This is Budget Planning Calendar. I do believe Vice Chancellor Del Rosso is going to speak to this.
Thank you, Board President Godfrey. So this is just a new item that we will be presenting to the board on a yearly basis every December. But the Budget and Planning Calendar, and this is one of the, one of the reasons we need to do this is because this is required under the education But the budget and planning calendar, and this is one of the, one of the reasons we need to do this is because this is required under the Education Code of California in Title V, that we need to be transparent in providing the board and the public in terms of what our budget development processes through the year, all the way to the adoption of the new budget. Typically, December is the time when we do this budget calendar presentation. And the reason for that is typically, the next fiscal year planning and budgeting process starts when the Legislative Analyst Office releases their analysis and analysis for the next fiscal year, which already happened about two weeks ago. And so moving forward every year, every December, a budget planning and development calendar will be presented to the board. And this is just for information.
Any questions? Okay, let's roll on. Item number 30 is an action item, and I believe you are on tap for that myself.
Correct. So this is just requesting the board for approval for an emergency declaration for the repairs of the roofs for the McCollin Terrace Apartments. So as you know, because of severe weather over the past few months, one of the buildings got water damage and water leak. And we already identified this during our due diligence period, which was the reason why we negotiated for the purchase price and reduced it by $1 million because we know that the roofs, one of the, three of the roofs of the buildings, seven buildings will have to be replaced eventually. We were hoping that we're gonna do this over the summer, but because of extreme weather, we have to do the repairs sooner than later. And so doing the emergency resolution will buy us time to make sure that we can do the repairs as soon as possible in order to avoid more damage to the building.
Any questions on this question? Trustee Casas.
Just want to, I want to know if the insurance was involved in this and are they managing the, the repairs or who's managing the repairs?
So we will be the one responsible for, go ahead, Joe.
Mark, who are Director of Purchasing and Risk Management, has already contacted insurance. In fact, the, the insurance adjuster had already visited the site to take notes. So what we will do, be doing is the district will be managing the repairs. But we will go back to the insurance and see what we can charge to the insurance.
Great, thank you. Other questions? Can I get a motion to approve this resolution?
Cheng moves approval.
I second.
Cheng moves, Shu seconds. Student trustees, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Trustees, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Okay, great, thanks. All right, item number 31, authorizing a separate bank account.
Move approval.
Second.
Motion by Landsberger, I think second was by Casas. Advisory vote, student trustees, all say aye.
Aye.
Trustees, in favor say aye.
Aye.
Bye. Okay, thank you. Moved, moved and approved. All right. We are at item number 32, requires action. I believe Vice Chancellor De La Russa is going to speak to this one.
So this is a, thank you, Board President Godfrey. So this is a action item requesting the board to approve the bondless revision number 28 for Measure G. And this bondless revision includes two, two, my, two items. The first one is the creation of a project for kicking off the student housing renovation that we already, we identified that we need to do from when we bought the property. And this would be allotted a budget of $28 million as part of the housing, housing funds that was approved by the board. The second one is the physical education complex doing a budget transfer from two different sources. One is from the campus contingency funds from the Anza College and the other one is from the physical education gymnasium building renovation. And this budget bondless revision also includes the renaming of the project to align with the official title of the project that we submitted to the state for funding. Because as you know, the physical education complex is funded by the state at 75%. And the, and the remainder 25% is from local sources.
Thank you. Are there any questions on this? Can I get a motion?
Move approval.
Second.
Motion by Casas, approve, or seconded by Landsberger. Advisory vote, student trustees, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Trustees, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Thank you. Thank you. I believe up next.
Measure C, bondless revision is simply doing budget transfer of $200,000 from a contingency to project 2A3, which is to replace the stadium and track visual display, also including the scoreboard at the De Anza College campus.
Any questions? Can I get a motion to approve?
I'll move approval.
Thank you. Motion by trustee Gavatua. A second?
I'll second.
Second by Blaze. Advisory vote, student trustees, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Thank you. Trustees, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Anybody opposed? But I heard them all. Okay, great. Thank you. Thank you very much for that. We're moving to the human resources section. We won't, there won't be presentations on these, although we have to approve them individually. So I'm going to go through them individually, give the opportunity to ask questions and then we'll call for approvals. So item number 34 requires action. I want to see if there's any questions for Vice Chancellor Rose. Not seeing any questions. Can I get a motion?
I move approval.
I second.
Okay, move by Landsberger, seconded by Shu. Advisory vote, student trustees, say, if you approve, say aye.
Aye.
Thank you. Trustees, if you approve, say aye.
Yes.
Thank you. Thank you. Moving on to number 35. Again, this is an action item. If you have questions, please present them. Seeing no questions, can I get a motion to approve?
Move approval.
Can I get a second?
Second.
Motion by Landsberger, seconded by Blaze. Student advisory vote, students in favor say aye.
Aye.
Thank you. Trustees, in favor say aye.
Yes.
Aye.
Thank you. Approved. You won't be surprised to know that number 36 falls into the same category. This is also an action item. However, I, I'm not trying to rush you. I want to make sure if you have questions, please take the opportunity to ask Vice Chancellor Rose. Are there any questions?
I'll motion to approve.
Second.
Thank you. Motion by Gavatua and seconded by Blaze. Student advisory vote, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Trustee vote, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Thank you. Approved. I'm sounding like a broken record. Number 37, item number 37. Any questions for Vice Chancellor Rose? Can I get a motion? Move by Casas.
I will second.
Seconded by Gavatua. Student advisory vote, students in favor say aye.
Aye.
Thank you. Trustees, in favor say aye.
Aye.
Anybody opposed? Say nay. Okay, approved. But wait, there's more. Item number 38. Any questions?
I'll motion approval.
Second.
I think that was Gavatua made the motion and Casa second. Okay, great. Student advisory vote, students, if you're in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Trustees, if you're in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Anybody opposed? Say nay. Great, approved. Okay, last one in this section, item number 39. Are there questions on item number 39? Can I get a motion to approve?
No, I do have a question.
Okay, great, let's hear it.
I, I noticed that a, an announcement has already been distributed. Have you received any response yet to that?
A response to the, just a few questions, but nothing other than that. The real action starts, should the board approve it tonight, then individual packets will go out to each eligible employee to their home address. So just a note to, for you and all your members, if they haven't updated their address in the system, then they won't receive it. But no, I haven't gotten any response other than a few questions.
Okay, thank you.
If you could remind me again that time, timeframe that people will have and then when it comes back to us for approval. The applications are due by the end of February and then PARZ. I just want to introduce Jennifer Maaza from PARZ. She and her team have been very instrumental working on all the, the information, the estimates and so forth, but we anticipate bringing a recommendation back by April, the April board meeting, whether to move forward or not.
Thank you. Other questions? Oh, sorry, I was looking the wrong direction.
No, you should look at them first. They got a lot. Thank you. So I just wanted to report now and ask some, some clarifying questions. I have heard some interest from the faculty and also some questions about, you know, why are we embarking in this? I had the opportunity to sit down with, with the vice chancellor last week and she was very generous to explain to myself and our Senate vice president, some of what's behind this supplemental retirement plan. Our, my understanding after that meaning is that this isn't similar to the previous one where we were really reacting to some financial difficulties and trying to attain some financial stability. And then instead, this one's aimed at sort of creating more fluidity and some ability to perhaps have some realignments with where our money is spent. With that in mind, the concern that I have from the faculty is what priorities have been identified with respect to this realignment? I'm kind of, what is the planning process and, you know, what, what are the ideas about where this is going to, you know, what, what that process means? And what the scale of that realignment might look like?
Was that a rhetorical question?
Not really. I mean, if you, if you could maybe just give a few more details to.
So, and thank you for emphasizing this is absolutely nothing like the, the SERP that was issued in 2018 or 2019. But as for the, the strategic realignment, it depends. And, and as I shared with you and Shagun, that planning should be going on right now, right? So a lot of the strategic planning that like you saw in De Anza's strategic plan report. So a lot of that is going on right now. There's also a somosino task force on resource allocation, a different potentially resource allocation model. So as this application or if the board adopts this tonight and we move forward with the application process and the planning mostly at the college level and some of the central services is going to be critical. So I would continue to engage in those processes.
Thank you.
Yes.
All right, thank you. That's very useful information, Eric. And I think by Chancellor Rose, you've approached this in a, in I think a very appropriate way. As I understand it, no predetermined outcomes are anticipated. You simply want to create a known circumstance, additional flexibility in making adjustment and a known circumstance of how much of that can occur in order then to give the planning process some concrete substance to work on. Is that correct?
That's correct. For example, whatever savings is realized would go into next year's budget and planning process, right? So it would be part of the faculty priority hiring process, for example. And so this is just a means by way of really realigning and reinvesting in the areas where their resources needed right now. So this is not intended to generate a specific level of savings that must be realized, but obviously, we don't want to offer this and see a cost to it. So whatever savings there are will be part of the overall budgeting process.
That's very useful. Thank you.
Yes.
Thank you. So I had the opportunity of sharing the chancellor's priorities with our academics in it last Monday. And a question came up on a side for me was from my constituents is how does the SERP align with the chancellor's priorities?
What the SERP is a mechanism. It's a tool to help the district achieve those priorities. So again, there's, there's not a specific plan other than to generate savings that will enhance and, you know, some of the resources that we have now or maybe new resources where there, where there aren't any right now. But they're absolutely intended to align with the chancellor's priorities. So the spending of it will be part of the process that you all will engage in. My portion of this is just to get the application out there and hopefully folks apply. Yes.
I just want, one more quick follow up. In my work on our resource and allocation budget, resource allocation planning team at De Anza, I've noticed that when we have faculty retire and, you know, oftentimes our retiring faculty are closer to the higher, the top end of the pay scale instead of the bottom. We're not necessarily credited what they go out at. We're credited a lower amount, somewhere more in the middle. I don't know. Is that going to be the case with the SRP as well? Where we'll be credited kind of the replacement value of that number of faculty positions or was the intention to free up that actual full dollar amount for the colleges?
The net savings takes into account a backfill at the average part-time faculty rate.
But this is, but maybe this is where my understanding is finally apart. This isn't about savings. This is about reallocation. So the re.
So that will be part of the task force, somosino task force for our resource allocation model. We're in, we're going to define the process and define the methodology on how we allocate resources for central services, for food college and for De Anza College and district-wide expenses.
Thank you.
Other questions? This is important. I want to make sure.
Let me just add a little enhancement. Thank you. We're gonna, we're gonna make sure that we stay in compliance with the 50% law as well as the FON. So as we go through all of this, those will be a critical aspects that we will make sure we're in compliance with.
Yes, yes.
So I'm sorry, I almost sorry I opened this, but I mean, it's not just a matter of dollars. It's also a matter of freeing up positions, correct?
Correct.
That's an important component to keep in mind. If we are restructuring and we have the opportunity to invest in a new position that might be more critical to the strategic priorities than a position that was vacated, that gives us the opportunity to do that without potentially laying somebody off or terminating their contract, correct?
Yes, or waiting until that opportunity arises. So this is really intended to accelerate that, those kinds of opportunities.
So it's both dollars and positions.
Yes.
Great.
Yes.
And just because no one classified has talked in a minute. But I, I do see it as a, an actionable item that drives forward, like that employer of choice. Because by creating those spaces where you can create position movement availability, you can restructure the organization, do a staffing study, you know, really analyze what it is we do and then without people being there, it's much easier to move the funds and positions. So I, I am in favor of this.
I've got a technical term, I think, is wiggle room. Yes. Yes. You on? Oh, got it.
Yeah, sorry. I would also, and this is for ongoing conversation that I will, I know we will need to have on this topic. But in terms of the reprioritization of how we think about resources, to really sort of think about making a commitment to a staffing study. And that is something that in all my time here, we've never really looked closely at in terms of the type of work that our units do and the human resources that really should go into supporting that so that we do increase our efficiency and our ability to support our students better. That's, I think, you know, especially as we think about the somosino's perspective, not just being an employer of choice, but let's minimize duplication. Let's work smarter, not longer and harder. It would be nice to get sort of adopt that lens in terms of being less reactive and more proactive, which is what I'm hearing the SERP would give us some flexibility, or the hope it's. I know it's not been approved, but to then move in that direction. So from labor, at least in my space, that is what we would hope for. And where we see the lean in is to support our classified staff.
May I just add also, all the applications will go to PARZ and then PARZ will send me a list weekly in terms of the applicants, which I will then share with the members of the executive leadership team so they can work with their teams to start planning, right? Instead of just waiting till the very end. Instead of just waiting till the very end and say, oh, my gosh, who's leaving? So again, the the planning of this is really, really critical. And that would continue, you know, obviously with whatever planning processes you have in place now as well as, you know, this additional information that will be provided to all of you, actually.
Thank you. Anything else? Can we get a motion to approve?
Second.
A motion by trustee Casas and second by trustee Landsberger. Student advisory about student trustees in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Trustee votes, trustees in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Thank you. Thank you. Thank you for this work. All right. We've moved on to the reports section, which I have noticed takes us about an hour to get through. Not that I've noticed that, but I'm just telling you.
Let's be brief.
All right, well.
Look at, there you go.
You succeeded in killing my laptop battery. So thank you very much this evening. I don't have a lot to say. Well, it's not an ETS computer because. But no, I do want to thank leadership throughout the year. I had a recent conversation with the chancellor. I mean, I think this employer of choice item is something that people do want to see some tangible action on. This is a, the SERP is a component that feeds into that, the staffing study. I think those are important as as well as just the commitments that, you know, you get from executive leadership teams on on these issues. I think things like the climate survey, they spoke to some issues at the campus. I think that administrators, you've done a great job and we have, you know, an employer of choice there. So we only have a couple more employee groups to go. So I look forward to seeing how that, how that takes place. I brought two specific issues. We have a vagrant on campus who keeps coming to Foothill and is breaking into spaces and unfortunately defecating in them. So we hope to see some action on that soon because I think it's one of those items that does, it doesn't show up directly in a climate survey, but if you have to come to work, if students have to go in that space, faculty, staff, it's an issue. Sorry to bring the dark stuff. I was trying to wake you up a little bit. The other item we have is we have an administrator at Deanza who's trying to enact 60 minute unpaid meal breaks, which is not, not the standard at the campus. And so that's leading to hardship in that area. So we're working on organizing and putting together a, a letter to identify that hardship because it means people can't get home to their families, to their children, to support their colleagues. So it's something that we're seeing. And as a part of this employer of choice, I think that we're looking for a more consistent standard of management, perhaps. Because I hear great things from the executive leadership team, but I, I don't know that that permeates to every manager beneath them. And there are things that you would expect to be norms that perhaps aren't. And so I do trust in each chancellor, the vice chancellor of human resources and lead to make sure that those things do permeate as well as the two college presidents. So I think that'll be fantastic. And then, yeah, staffing study would be a lovely thing to pair with this. I think A and R is a classic example where you can't just have enough staff for the students that you do have. It's about all the students who enroll here and there are similar areas that serve that. But I hope you all have a wonderful holiday.
Pass the ball.
Yes, exactly. And I'll pass it to Elaine.
All right. Good evening, everyone. Just wanted to send some end of term cheer for everyone. All as both campuses wind down the fall term. Again, a lot of work from all our colleagues across all locations. And just wanted to thank everyone for that, their hard work. Again, happy holiday season for, for whatever holiday should you choose to celebrate a holiday, but come back refreshed in the winter. And I look forward to working with everyone then. Couple items, I do want to echo Scott in terms of the need for a staffing study, although I know I mentioned it in the first place, but just coming back around to it. And also interest amongst my unit in terms of climates survey follow up in terms of district leadership with that regarding the employees. And so we look forward to being engaged in what that looks like in the coming year. Just again, a quick couple of sort of labor updates for my unit. As you know, the classification study has been ongoing this year. We're still in the classification study phase, have not gone to the compensation phase. I do want to thank all of my members, my negotiation team, including Josh Pelletier and Pauline Brown for work on the negotiation side, as well as all the managers that have supported their supervisors in reviewing the proposed job descriptions that have come out so far of the study. And of course, the district leadership under Vice Chancellor Rose, Diana and her team. We'll just say we're still trying to wrap up sort of three job descriptions affecting four incumbents. And we hope that they will be resolved before the end of this calendar year so that we can move forward into the compensation stage in 2026. Other than that, I hope that we continue to make good progress together as a community between labor and the district.
I'll try to keep it short. I want to first thank you all for approving our tentative agreement improvement for our negotiations MOU. And I'm hoping that CICA gets their part of it back to me before winter break so we can get it ratified completely and done finally. Also, I wanted to extend the invite to everybody, all the board members and all the executive leaders. We are doing our winter party this Friday from 12 to 2:00, and I have changed it to a winter party so that everybody can be included. And that's pretty much it. I want to thank you.
Good evening, everyone. Two quick things out of the district academic senate. First of all, you approve or you didn't approve, you had an information item on two policies that were being revised. Item number 26 that did not require any discussion. In addition to those two items, the chancellor's advisory committee approved five academic procedures, administrative procedures at our last meeting. Thank you again, Vice Chancellor Gohar Momjen, because we are making movement on these policies. The most important of those in my mind was the policy that prioritized registration for emoja and puente students. Beginning in spring of 2026, they will be in level two, something that was not previously present. So very grateful that that was done. The second thing is just in a reflection of the conversation that happened around faculty reaching out to students and having the involvement and being the first line of contact and touch points in many, many cases. One of the conversations that I know my predecessor in this position was bringing forward repeatedly was our class sizes. And as we are talking about resource allocation, as we are moving into basic aid, as we are doing all of these other things, I will be frank that I teach 50 students in my courses. I cannot touch all of them. I cannot get to know all of them in the first week or two when it's imperative that if a student is starting to slip or starting to struggle, that I be able to talk to them and reach out to them. And so having that conversation about lowering our class sizes, I think is going to be crucial in the year going forward and the years going forward to enable us to do the work that our equity plan calls for, that our strategic plans call for, and that our students need. So I appreciate that. Happy holidays. I look forward to seeing you in January.
Good evening. I'd be curious too about the staffing survey, so whatever that brings. But Foothill faculty are underway with finals and will be concluding our term this coming Friday. With regards to artificial intelligence, this continues to be an item of interest at our Foothill Academic Senate. At our last academic senate meeting last Monday, we recommended providing Google's AI platform for all Foothill employees. And that has been recommended to our mission informed planning council. We're working also with Vice Chancellor Hadsole in addressing agentic AI and look forward to hosting a forum at Foothill that will address some of these challenges that this technology brings. AI fellow applications closes this evening. So again, we anticipate having six faculty members as fellows for the remainder of the academic year. And as a result of all our AI discussions, there is an interest in reconvening the academic integrity committee, which is a subcommittee of the academic senate. Program reviews were submitted last Friday, and we are looking at ways to improve the process and showcase our programs this coming year. Also, ACCJC follow up report was approved at senate and has been approved at MIPSY as well and will be on its way here to the board in an upcoming agenda item. And then, let's see. I just wanted to thank trustee Landsberger for your leadership as board president and congratulate President Godfrey and Vice President Casas for your election to your positions. Thank you.
Good evening. I'll start by wishing you good luck in your brand new position. And you have my deepest condolences. No, seriously, thank you for your service on this committee. It's, it's an incredibly important position. And thank you to outgoing President Landsberger, trustee Landsberger now, for his service. And congratulations on your proclamation or whatever Patrick handed you. It looks like a very fancy piece of paper. So very well deserved. So since last I spoke to you, a bunch of things have happened, farthest in the past. And just after our last meeting was the ASC fall plenary down in La Jolla, which I will report out. I actually asked a number of locals whether La Jolla was part of San Diego, was part of San Diego or not. In general, they said no, though there was a lot of hotly contested debate about whether it was a neighborhood of San Diego or its own space. I thought I needed to express that very important finding to you. I did. I brought it back. Out of the, out of the fall plenary, there were a number of very important resolutions. Those can of course be found on the ASC website on the resolution page. I wanted to highlight just a few, particularly ones around building tools and systems to help our students succeed. There were a couple around improving the common course numbering process and trying to work with both the chancellor's office and our system partners on a streamlining articulation review for those to make it less onerous on our faculty and our classified staff. And also on doing research on prerequisites within those common course numbering outlines to make sure that we can meet some standard that's acceptable statewide as opposed to having some colleges that require one or other and then having that debate after we've rolled out the templates. There was also a number of resolutions around Cal Getse, including partial certification for Cal Getse and in support of that. And also trying to link Cal Getse to the CSU breadth requirements. So if you satisfied one, you'd also satisfy the other. And that something that had articulated as part of a Cal Getse area would also then automatically get approval for that Cal Getse general education area, which you think would just happen, but no. Those actually have to be applied for separately. Outside of sort of beyond that, we had a couple other interesting resolutions that I want to highlight. One around specifically encouraging local colleges and districts to develop protocols for and to respond to faculty experiencing threats of workplace violence and social media threats. We do have an AP and a BP that relate to this. But I thought it was a good moment to highlight to all of you that that may be worthy of taking another look at, make sure that it's kept up with the time since it was last revised, I think in around 2020. Also, and unsurprisingly, the ASC officially opposed the compact for academic excellence in higher education, which I'm sure comes as a shock to all of you. Much like our compatriots up at Foothill, we are engaged in a number of conversations at our local academic senate around AI and agentic AI, including a fantastic video wherein an instructor uses agentic AI over the course of about five minutes to complete an assignment for them without touching the keyboard. It's a eye opening and somewhat terrifying video. I suggest you watch it. It's linked to our academic senate agenda from, I think, our last meeting in November, if you're particularly curious, or our December 3 meeting as well. We joined in Foothill in sending a letter to the vice chancellor about some of our concerns around AI and how we'd like to see that addressed. I think it's worth noting that our academic senate at Deanza was very split on that. And so while we did end up voting in favor of it, there are a lot of very differing opinions on AI. And I think that describes the landscape for moving forward. We have one AI fellow who's starting in winter quarter. We're serving in winter and spring. That's Chesa Capras. And we're very excited to have her working with us and helping us move our AI work along at Deanza. Other works we've looked at, just to name a few things that have come up on our schedule, we're talking about moving to an annual schedule for our courses and how that's going to impact faculty and how we can accomplish that. We've had some ongoing discussions about our administrative realignment at Deanza and how that's going to impact our faculty and our students and what that's going to look like. And I'm actually also really excited to report that we've been having some fantastic conversations in our curriculum committee about how to instill equity directly into our curriculum and do meaningful review around that and give feedback to our faculty as they're both proposing and revising courses. There were some updates to Title V that we needed to incorporate. And sort of on the back of that, we've done a really nice deeper dive into how to roll that into our regular curriculum process. And that's some very exciting work coming out of that committee. On a more fun note to sign off here, we had a welcome luncheon for our new full time faculty a couple weeks ago, sponsored by the academic senate. We invited our administrators, their, their deans, the president. And I think all of our senior administrators, a number of them were able to make time. They ran over after some ICE training that I think Chris made them attend or something like that. I don't know. I just bumped into you in the hallway. I don't know if that was your fault or not, but I'm going to blame you. So they were happy to get a little bit of food from Teriyaki Madness in Sunnyville, brought some food. It was very good, can recommend. And I just want to express the appreciation to our administrators for making time and for you all just for supporting the faculty and hiring them and bring these new and exciting people to our campus. And if any of you are interested in our future welcome or luncheons, or not, let me know and I'll make sure you all get invitations next time. Thank you all very much for a fantastic year. Have a very happy holidays and a restful break.
Thank you. Chancellor Lambert.
Yes, let me begin with where Eric just left off. I want to say thank you to everybody. We've had an incredible year, as you all know. And I look forward to the new year as we roll into next month. Also, I just want to thank Peter for your wisdom, your guidance and your insight for the last two years. You have helped steady the transition of me coming into this role. So thank you. Thank you Pearl for being in that vice president role as well. And Terry, I congratulate you in becoming the president. And Laura, I congratulate you in becoming the VP. And I look forward to working with both of you and your respective leadership roles. Just a few points I just want to emphasize for this evening. We are going to have a employee housing ribbon cutting. It may happen as early as December 18th. We're trying to get it to happen before we close out this calendar year. So that may be the only day that we may be able to make this happen. So just stay tuned. We'll keep you informed. Also, since Mary's here, and she alluded to this, the, correct me if I'm wrong, international collegiate programming competition, right? Contest, okay. So that was held at Deanza. President Torres was one of the welcoming speakers along with myself. What is impressive about this, this is a global event. And Deanza is the only community college participates along with the heavyweight universities in this competition. So we have a lot to be proud of. And thank you, Mary and your team for your leadership and what you do at Deanza for our students. Also, Eric mentioned it, the role plays. So we are continuing our investment in the ICE trainings. And so we did one that was focused just on administrative level. So each of us know very specifically what we need to do. And then we're going to roll out another level of training for everyone else. So we'll continue to invest in ongoing dialogue and training as we go forward. I had the good fortune to attend the SIP and Paint event. And I had actually painted since I was in elementary school, so I got to actually do a painting. That was really fun. So I want to just thank the folks at Deanza. And I closed out my year at Sarah Parex Engineering 101 class, where she asked me to come and do an assessment of the students' presentations that are, as they close out this calendar year. That was really fun. We are in great hands with our students as they step into their next level and their journey in life. So with that, happy holidays, everybody, and look forward to seeing you in the new year.
Happy festive season. Congratulations to all. I'm going to try to keep my board report to under a minute. I've sent you the full report in an email. In that, you'll see my, the ways that I'm out and about in the community at the Los Altos Lead, at Nova Works Launch Lab, and most recently elected as the vice. at Nova Works Launch Lab, and most recently elected as the vice chair of the Mountain View Chamber of Commerce. And I look forward to serving in that role in our community and as the chair in 2027. We are also celebrating some sports achievements. We had a winning season, not an undefeated, but a very positive winning season in our football program, which resulted in a berth into the Sequoia Bowl and we did win that bowl game in overtime. So it was quite exciting. We are also in the news. You might have seen the Mercury News article on the physics show. You might have also seen the Los Altos Town Criers article about our NOVA, NOVACALL, which was the student winner, winning team of the case competition. So they get to go present at the headquarters of Google. Their really brilliant idea for serving, providing a solution to the digital divide. It was quite unique. That, I mentioned the physics show. I also mentioned it in my email to you. You know, the model of the physics show, the tickets that you buy fund Title I schools coming to our campus and being exposed to the excitement of science. And so I invite you all to buy tickets over the break and go see this physics show. It's a great holiday festive outing. Thank you very much.
Under a minute, let's do it. So I, for the first time, have sent the board a copy of my board reports. There were 17 items on there. I'm not going through all 17. I'm going to focus on four. So first, I want to congratulate our student DASG Flea Market. The best of Silicon Valley list, there, you probably have heard of the list. And the Deansa Flea Market was voted as the best flea market for, for the first time in a while. So kudos to the students. Yes, it's amazing and you'll see more details in the board report. Very, very proud of them. I also want to congratulate an incredible star. Toshi Komatsu, who's our director of the Deansa College Planetarium. He was recognized with a STAR award by the Cupertino Chamber of Commerce on December 4. He was recognized as the Deansa Educator of the Year. Toshi has done some amazing work. Our senior leadership team nominated him. We tried to do something. Last year, we nominated a faculty member and this year we decided to nominate an incredible staff member in the planetarium. Since 2016, he's played a pivotal role in shaping the Deansa College Planetarium and has just done remarkable work. I mean, we're talking thousands of students that he sees each year and has really been a major asset in upgrading our planetarium software, our projection and sound systems. And we're just so incredibly proud of his contribution, his invisible work that he does behind the scenes to serve our campus and to serve our students. So I really wanted to recognize him. We celebrated the HUBS ribbon cutting ceremony. So thanks to Dennis and the foundation and Gohar was there. And we had a great turnout for our expanded HUB Basic Need Center location. So very proud of that. And I want to congratulate Lorene Balducci and her team with Hope Services. We're celebrating 50 years of our work at Hope Services and there was a great ceremony on December 2 that the chancellor and I had the privilege of attending, very proud of the amazing educational inclusive programming that we're doing at Hope Services. And finally, I'll end with our FBLA students. They have done an amazing job. They participated at the state fall business leadership conference in La Jolla. They, 11 schools and over 200 students. And Deansa ended up with the most amount of first through fifth place rankings of our students. So they are just amazing, double the amount of the second place college that they competed against. So congratulations to our students and happy holidays to everybody. Thank you.
Okay, I'll say a minute and a half, but I have three points. First, I recently attended advocacy academy on behalf or with the Student Senate of California Community Colleges at Riverside. And this was on behalf of my role on the Board of Governors, but I was also able to share my valuable insight as a student trustee here and learned a lot of valuable things I'll be bringing back to my position. Second point, student government updates. We're continuing conversations of finding a replacement space for our bookstore since we're ending our contract there. And there's been no decision made yet, so I'll update you all once there is. And we're also going into finals, so student government is no longer meeting for the rest of the month. And final point is personally, right now I'm working on a public transit project. And to showcase how bad the issue is, to drive to Deansa from here, it takes seven minutes. To take public transit, it takes an hour. Yep. So with that in mind, I've been working with, or I've been exploring different options with student housing shuttles to possibly expanding Deansa's hopper rideshare system. And special thanks to President Will and who's been very supportive through this whole process, connecting me with resources and really helping me succeed in my student leadership position. That's all.
I will say it was a great opportunity to see Toshi accept the award and to get to chat with him about his work with the planetarium, especially for me as someone who entered Deansa as a major in astrophysics, although you can see how that plan panned out. Nobody warned me about the amount of math involved in physics. That's all. Happy holidays, everybody. Looking forward to seeing you on the new year.
Happy December, everybody. Let me give the quick update on the Audit and Finance Committee. How about at this time? Met last week, full team participated. We have two new fully engaged community members, went very well. It was a full agenda, 10 agenda items that included the audit reports that we had tonight. And then of course, the full set of details on the 2025-26 first quarter reports for the bond, bond projects as well as the overall budget. And we had the Audit Engagement Manager with the audit firm with us at that time as well. So again, I think it's a great team that serves us well. So happy holidays to all.
Happy holidays.
Nothing more from me except a festive end of the year for everyone and a healthy and prosperous new year.
And student trustees, you sent me a note that she fell ill and left, so she promises to do two reports when we see her in January. I would like to say this is the end for the evening. However, we have a whole nother meeting. So the regular board meeting ends now. The next regular board meeting will be the 12th. Actually, I skipped talking about the foundation board, so stop packing. Do not pack. Dennis Chima, can you give us a little update on the foundation board? Stop packing, don't pack.
All right. Good evening, everyone. Dennis Chima, Executive Director, Foothill Deansa Foundation. And happy to be anyone's companion to a La Jolla fact finding mission. So it sounds like a variety of those this evening. Looking forward to working with trustee Vatwa and trustee Kassas on the foundation board. I did want to let you know that the foundation recently completed its own audit and we had a clean bill of health as well. So big kudos to my team and our auditors for pulling that together. I want to congratulate our friends at Deansa and the HUB. If our, if you haven't been to visit the HUB, please do so. You'll see some incredible work by our classified colleagues and our deans and our students there to create a welcome space. And again, glad to be a small part of that and thinking back to when the food pantry was a closet in a building with one shelf and one refrigerator. So glad to have been a part of that. The foundation is in the process of working on a new campaign entitled Future Ready. It's an umbrella campaign to raise funds for technology, allied health and other workforce projects that the campuses are undergoing. My vision is a $10 million three year campaign. More to come on that in the new year. But I look forward to everyone putting their shoulder to the wheel as we have a great opportunity to grow this district under some new leadership, new energy and an incredible opportunity to be the player that we should be here in Silicon Valley. Finally, we've got some holiday campaigns going on. If you happen to undertake holiday giving this year and you have a favorite nonprofit organization that rhymes with Foothill Deansa Foundation, I would encourage you to make a donation. Happy holidays.
Thank you. Thank you very much. I'm going to gavel this one out and gavel the next one. So don't stop packing. Okay, this meeting is adjourned. Imagine they don't want to stay for the next one. No, it's not. You can go, Maria. 30 seconds. Literally. I call the meeting to order of the College District Financing Corporation Board of Directors Meeting. We have one agenda item, which is to approve minutes, I believe. Oh, we have to elect officers. Okay. Let's approve minutes first.
I move approval of the January 13, 2025.
Let's see, moved by Chang, seconded by Kassas. I'll take a student advisory vote. They don't vote in this one? Okay. All right. So all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Ayes.
Anybody opposed? Okay, great. Actually, I see a status of projects as a first agenda item, but there's nothing in here.
No new projects.
No, no projects, right? Okay. All right. Election of officers.
I nominate Terry Godfrey as president.
I second.
No, you don't need a second.
Oh.
All in favor?
Yes.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, I believe our work here is done. Oh, secretary, because it says vacant.
I nominate Chancellor Lambert as secretary.
Secretary. All right. All in favor?
Yes.
Say aye. Aye. Thank you for being the secretary. I believe our work here is done.
It's done.
Adjourned. You too.